And leading, and so we ask you to continue to do so as we tackle the issue on John Hay. Father, we pray in Christ Jesus' name.
Amen.
I am a Philippine Consulor, mandated by law to enact measures and ordinances that redound the general welfare of my constituents in their pursuit for happiness, peace, and prosperity. I believe in public service above self as the guiding principle of my official acts, and as I tread the pathways of local legislation. May the Almighty guide my mind and heart, raise up the truth to my constituents and the Filipino people.
The City Secretary, please do the roll call.
The Presiding Officer, the Honorable Edison R. Bilog. The Honorable Roberto C. Ortega. The Honorable Betty Lord de Sefta Banda. The Honorable Isabelo B. Cosalan Jr. The Honorable Leandro Bianot Jr. The Honorable Elmer Oda Twin. The Honorable Richard A. Carillo. The Honorable Faustino Uy Ulan. The Honorable Joel A. Alansab. The Honorable Elaine D. Sembrano. The Honorable Peter C. Fianza. The Honorable Fred L. Bagbagan. The Honorable Lilia G. Yanon. And the Honorable Michael L. Lawana.
Can the City Secretary certify that we have a corum?
We have a corum, Mr. Chair.
As certified by the City Secretary, the Chair declares that we have a corum, and the Council is now on official session. Before we start, may I read the letter of of Mr. Eric E. Alcaraz, LLS A3 of the Honorable Consulor Roberto C. Ortega, stating among others that the Honorable Roberto C. Ortega would like to be excused in the City Council's special session scheduled today, July 21, 2015, due to the fact that he would be he would be undergoing checkup, okay, a medical checkup, okay? So with that, please put on record the letter of the Honorable of Eric E. Alcaraz, and the said letter is hereby noted, okay? So, any motion with regard to Item 1A to C? Consular Lawana, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May we move that we suspend the rolls so that we can accommodate our invited guests?
Any second, seconded by Consulor Fianza Cosalan and Oda Twin. Any objection? Considering there is none, we suspend the rules in order to accommodate our invited guests, and the City Secretary is hereby tasked to read out the names of those invited in today's session relative to Items 1A to C.
Mr. Robert John L. Sobrepenia. Attorney Arnel Pasano D. Casanova. Dr. Jamie Eloyes M. Agbayani. And the 13 Punong barangays. Namely, Punong Barangay Constanzo F. Danau. PB Gil A. Lomboy. PB Magdalena M. Lambak. PB Soriano A. Palunan. PB Ferdinand M. Bukad. PB Rosalina M. Martin. PB Martin A. Anglog. PB Jesusa L. Viskaya. PB Enrique Lindawan. PB Manuel L. Bakungan Jr. PB Thelma S. Pasag. And PB Raymond F. Rui Vivar.
The barangay captains, please occupy the front seat. Okay? 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 The, the, anong tawag dito?
Anong position?
The Honorable Jaime Luiz M. Agbayani of the John Hay Management Corporation wrote the Office of the Vice Mayor informing that she would not be able to attend today's special session, considering that she has to attend the GHMC Board Meeting and other meetings in Manila which are of equal importance. Those meetings were already scheduled and confirmed prior to receiving the Council's invitation, okay? So, Dr. Agbayani would not be able to attend today's session. And the same is true with Mr. Sobrepenia. He would not be able to attend today's special session, however, he authorized Attorney Federico Mandapat Jr., who is with us, and Attorney Manuel Ubara to represent the John Hay Development Corporation, okay? So, who would take the lead? Yes, Consular Oda Twin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we mean to say that the distinguished councils of Sobrepenia are authorized with an SPA so that whatever they say in this council meeting would be recognized, Mr. Chairman?
Binding with the corporation. Sir, clarification as to whether, whatever manifestation or declaration you would be making?
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor.
Yes, good afternoon.
And the honorable members of this august body. While we do not have the special power of attorney as requested by the Honorable Oda Twin, but we will duly authorize, Your Honor. Robert John L. Sobrepenia requested us to inform this body that he will be available on Monday during the regular session if you so wish to listen to him personally, Your Honor.
But the problem is we suspended, we canceled the Monday session, so we don't have any council session on Monday, this Monday, this coming Monday.
He will come up because he has to attend to a pre-scheduled appointment today, Your Honor, so he was not able to make it. However, he authorized us. Now, if the honorable body would like to listen to us without the special power of attorney, just like in a pre-trial, Your Honor, however, we will assure you that we are duly authorized by the Camp John Hay Development Corporation to represent the said body in this hearing this afternoon.
And a letter was sent by Mr. Alfredo R. Injigas III, EVP Chief Operating Officer, confirming the manifestation of Attorney Mandapat that they are indeed the authorized representatives of Camp John Hay Development Corporation in today's session. Yes, Consular Tabanda?
May I start, Mr. Chair?
Okay.
Good afternoon to our distinguished guests, all of you. I'd like to find out, I am particularly interested in the status of the locators at John Hay because many of them are Baguio business people who have invested time, money, and effort. This is why I would like to know. And if there is any locator here, maybe I would also like to request, Mr. Vice Mayor, if they can come here because according to BCDA, they are offering the new, they are offering the old locators the opportunity to remain in John Hay, but they must sign a new contract with John Hay. So I would like to find out what are the terms and conditions of this contract, and what is the response of the locators to the offer of BCDA? So that is the first set of questions I have because I think it affects John Hay Devco.
Before you answer the question, is that the matter pending before the Court of Appeals with regard to the locators? The problem there is that we might be covered by the rule on subjudice considering that it is being deliberated upon in the Court of Appeals.
So if that's the case, Mr. Chair, may I request if there is a locator in the audience? Because the locator may not be bound by that rule. We want to know if there is indeed an offer from BCDA for them to sign a new contract with BCDA, and what is the reaction of the locator to this offer of BCDA?
Your honors, with the kind permission of the body, we will discuss, considering that we have been invited here as resource persons, and mindful of the importance of the time of the councilors in order to make a educated and decision and resolution on the matter. We will invoke when it is necessary to invoke the subjudice rule, but there are certain circumstances or facts that can be discussed with the council that is not covered by the subjudice rule. In particular, if I may, with the kind permission of the Presiding Officer, partly to respond to the query of the Consulor. CGH Devco already filed a petition with the Court of Appeals, precisely asking the Court to order BCDA to respect the contracts of third parties, and this includes the locators. Third parties can be classified into two, generally into two groups or categories. The first one are the locators. These are the individuals or entities that invested as a business or is performing a commercial function inside Camp John Hay. Then the second one is the residential. These are parties who bought private properties such as units and lots, and their intention there is to use it for their own professional benefit. Now, precisely, the thrust of the petition is to ask the Court to respect the contracts entered into by these third parties until 2046.
Mr. Chair?
2046? Yes, yes, Your Honor.
Mr. Chair, may I inquire if there is any locator in the audience? Because I would like to have an answer to my query. If indeed BCDA has offered to the locators that they remain there, provided they sign a new contract with BCDA?
I don't think they are invited.
There is no locator in the audience?
Yes, because they were not invited in today's session.
Yeah, but there is nobody there. Then I will have to look for another way to find out. Because our, my interest is to protect the interests of the locators and the residential owners, whether it is in relation to, whether it is with BCDA or with John Hay, provided that their interests are protected. I do not want to delve into the case, the pending cases, because that would be subjudice. That's my first round, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, Consular Carillo. But before, I would like to relinquish the chair to Consulor Fianza, considering that I would be attending a meeting at the Mayor's Office at 2:30 PM. So, Consular Fianza, please. Okay, Consular Carillo, your recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Attorney Ubara, Attorney Mandapat. Thank you for attending and responding to our invitation as resource persons. In the, I would like to call your attention in the judgment of the arbitration where BCDA is ordered to pay 1.42 billion. Is it the claim, sir, of Devco that this 1.42 billion is the money of Devco or the money of the investors?
The decision itself discusses the nature of this 1.42 billion that is being asked of BCDA to return to CGH Devco. This represents the total rent paid by CGH Devco to BCDA from the start of the original lease contract up to the present.
Yes.
There is a categorical statement findings in that decision that this is the total rentals paid by the company to BCDA.
I will not dispute that, sir, that, because that is already the judgment. My only question is the source of the 1.42 billion. Is this the money of Devco or the locators?
This cannot be considered as money of the investors for the simple reason that this was already characterized by the arbitration decision to be the rentals paid by CGH Devco. If you will recall, under a lease contract, the obligation to pay the rent is the personal obligation of the lessee. In this case, the lessee is CGH Devco. So the money, the 1.42 billion being a rent, being categorized as the rent paid by CGH Devco, it is, the source of the fund came from CGH Devco.
That is the money of CGH Devco, meaning that that is a money invested by CGH Devco?
It is the money paid by CGH Devco as rent to BCDA.
But my question, sir, is the source. Is this money of CGH Devco or this is money paid by investors to CGH Devco? Who in turn, or which in turn, paid it in the form of rentals to BCDA?
This is the money of CGH Devco.
It, was it borrowed from the bank? Or was it a, it came from the source of income of CGH Devco other than the rentals paid by the locators?
The source of the amount paid as rent to BCDA comes from the income generated inside Camp John Hay.
Income generated inside Camp John Hay which involves, which includes payment from the locators? Because those are also income?
Yes. The nature of the transaction inside Camp John Hay is this. BCDA authorized CGH Devco to introduce improvements inside Camp John Hay, and in turn it also allowed CGH Devco to sell these improvements to third parties. In doing so, it may generate income. Now, from the income, and from the income in the sales of these properties and from other income inside Camp John Hay, that is where the company got its money to pay the rent due to BCDA.
And it can also come from the Gulf shares that was sold by the Gulf Corporation inside Camp John Hay.
As to that, I am not privy to that, Your Honor.
Anyway, the amount is 1.42 billion. So, in case this is returned to Camp John Hay Development Corporation, how about the locators, the third-party occupants, locators, investors inside Camp John Hay? Will they not share from the amount to be retained? I ask that because maybe I should premise it from the lease period, which is 25 years, renewable for another 25 years, that is the original contract. And there is a provision there that before the end of the 25th year, at least, I think at least three months, Devco should notify BCDA of its intention to renew the contract for another 55, 25 years, to make it a total of 50 years. The amount collected seemingly from the locators was for a total of 50 years, even before the expiration of the first 25 year. Is it correct to state that the payments collected by CGH Devco from the locators was for 50 years and not 25 years as originally indicated in the contract?
Okay, when an investor buys a property inside Camp John Hay, we issue a document which is equivalent showing title to that property, and that title is called as LWD or Limited Warranty deed, okay? Now, in that LWD, it is specifically provided for there that it shall be for a period of 50 years.
Why did the Devco assume that the period will be 50 years when the contract with BCDA is clearly indicated that it will be for 25 years, renewable for another 25 years?
That issue has already been raised a long time ago. I think this dispute between CGH Devco and BCDA has been going on for more than a decade already, and during that time, there had always been an issue about the intention of CGH Devco, whether it will ask for the other 25, for the renewal for another 25 years. Even during that time, CGH Devco already made it clear that it will avail of that option allowed under the original lease contract. In other words, it already signified to the contractor, another contracting party, namely BCDA, that it will ask for, ask for the renewal for another 25 years.
You said this was raised a long time ago. Was there any locator, investor who raised this issue, considering that it is the locator or investor that is mostly affected?
Well, we are happy to report to you that there was no locator who raised this issue, especially since at the time that they were issued the LWD, and it was already specified there that it shall be for until 2046, no locator questioned it. In fact, even BCDA, who was issued LWDs for units issued to them, as a result of the Dushon and Pago entered into with them sometime in 2008, likewise contained this provision that it shall be until 2046. BCDA never raised any issue or questioned this provision in the LWD.
Yes, yes, sir. BCDA, BCDA could not question that because I don't think they are affected by what is stated in the LWDA Limited Warranty deed, but I am more concerned of the locators. Is it safe to assume that the locators did not question this because they were not aware of the 25 years, renewable for another 25 years? Because had it been, had it been told to them beforehand that, "Look, I am only selling to you our right for 25 years, renewable for 25 years." This is different from saying outright, "Hey, I'm selling to you 50 years of our right to lease." Because if I were an investor, or a buyer, or locator in Camp John Hay, if you're going to sell to me that right of 25 years, renewable for another 25 years, that is different from outrightly saying to me, "This is good for 50 years." Could that be the reason why no investor, locator questioned the Limited Warranty deed for 50 years?
That may not be the explanation for that situation, Your Honor, because it was explained to the potential buyers at the time that they will, that they choose to buy a property inside Camp John Hay that it shall be for 50 years. But the basis for saying that it is for 50 years is that we refer now to the original lease contract between BCDA and CGH Devco, which contains the provisions which you just mentioned, Your Honor.
Thank you. I go back to the 1.42 billion. Seemingly, if this will be ordered returned, because this is the total amount paid, and there were already shares from the rentals that was given to the city of Baguio by way of projects. In fact, I should say that it is lamentable that not a single centavo went to the city covers. They were all given in the form of projects where these projects were identified by BCDA and Camp John Hay Development Corporation. Of course, the city is partly to blame also for just accepting it without insisting that it be paid in the form of cash because these were valued. Now, my question is, if that amount will be returned, will the city also be liable of returning the share of 25% that was paid to it?
There is no discussion in the arbitration tribunal ordering the City Government of Baguio to return 25% of what has already been paid by BCDA. And, well, that's number one. And then number two, the City Government of Baguio was never a party to that arbitration case, and therefore, there will be no basis to compel the City Government to return whatever of the 25% BCDA has already paid to the City Government of Baguio.
That is why we want to clarify, because if that amount will be paid to Camp John Hay Development Corporation, and you will, I hope you will not do it, if you will disappear, what will happen to those who will be liable for the 1.42 billion paid? The city who accepted 25% of the 1.42 billion, and the locators who claim, many are claiming that this 1.42 billion came from them by way of investment. What is the guarantee that later, if this amount is given to Camp John Hay Development Corporation, it will not run away and leave? where these projects were identified by B C D A and Camp John Hay Development Corporation. Of course, the city is partly to blame also for just accepting it without insisting that it be paid in the form of cash because these were valued. Now, my question is, if that amount will be returned, will the city also be liable of returning the share of 25% that was paid to it?
There is no discussion in the arbitration tribunal ordering the city government of Baguio to return 25% of what has already been paid by B C D A. And, well, that's number one. And then, number two, the city government of Baguio was never a party to that arbitration case. And therefore, there will be no basis to compel the city government to return whatever of the 25% B C D A has already paid to the city government of Baguio.
That is why we want to clarify. Because if that amount will be paid to Camp John Hay Development Corporation and you will, I hope you will not do it, if you will disappear, what will happen to those who will be liable for the 1.42 billion paid? The city who accepted 25% of the 1.42 billion? And the locators, who claim, many are claiming that this 1.42 billion came from them by way of investment. What is the guarantee? That later, if this amount is given to Camp John Hay Development Corporation, it will not run away and leave the investors in the city of Baguio liable, the city of Baguio liable for the 25% share? And the locators who will be evicted because they, they do not have any contract with B C D A? We all know that the contract between Devco and what you may call a third-party, third parties who entered into contract in good faith is not binding to B C D A. Because we all know that the sublesy cannot try, the rights of a sublesy cannot rise above the lesi. What is the guarantee now?
I think your answer, your question, Your Honor, has two parts. The first one is the guarantee, the 25% in connection with the city government. And then, the second part of your question refers to the locators and the other investors who bought properties inside Camp John Hay. Okay, let me address directly the two, the two categories. As to the first one, I recall distinctly during the last hearing, Mr. Casanova categorically stating that they will already give to you the 25% that they have already paid to you in connection with the rent that they have received from C J H Devco. In other words, I was made to understand during that hearing that it is the position of B C D A that it will not run after the city government for the return of the 25% of whatever 25% it has already paid to the city government. So, that's the first, that's my observation, Your Honor. And you can check the transcript of the last hearing to validate my understanding, Your Honor. Now, number two.
I heard that too, I heard that. I bibbly remember that, B C D A telling the city through the city council that it will, it will no longer run after the city for the 25% share.
In fact, if I recall, if I recall the right word, he said, that was the statement that he made during the last hearing, Your Honor. So, I think with that statement coming from the president of B C D A, that addresses directly the question of the, of the, of Your Honor, no? Now, as to the second category, referring to the locators and other investors in the property, that is precisely, as to your question, is C J H Devco going to disappear? The answer is no, it will not disappear. Now, if you're going to ask me, "What is your proof or evidence to show that it will not disappear?" My, even now, C J H Devco is fighting for the rights of the third parties, including the locators, by filing that petition with the Court of Appeals. Precisely as I mentioned before, during the start of the hearing, the main thrust of that petition is to ask the court to order B C D A to respect the contracts entered into with these third parties until 2046. That's the first concrete action being taken by C J H Devco to show that it will not disappear. Okay, number two. Assuming that a decision is already issued by the Court of Appeals and B C D A pays C J H Devco 1.4, pays the 1.421 billion as ordered in the arbitration award, the company is presently look, going to look for business opportunities, investment opportunities here in the city of Baguio once it exits Camp John Hay. So, that also addresses the question, one of the questions raised or concerns raised by the city council referring to the employment of, of people who will be affected by the change of management inside Camp John Hay. Precisely, that's the reason why we are asking for the preservation and the, and that the contracts entered into by, into by third parties be respected. It is to preserve a living community inside Camp John Hay. So, that is the, that is the main thrust. And precisely so that the employ, the, the employment of the people there will also, will not be, will not be affected by the change in the management of Camp John Hay when the arbitration tribunal award is implemented.
Thank you, Attorney Obara. You said that Camp John Hay Development Corporation will not run away. Is C J H Devco willing to put in escrow the 1.42 billion to guarantee that it will really not run away? Other than your, your, your claim, which may be categorized as self-serving, forgive me for saying that. But to guarantee that it will really not run away, is C J H Devco willing to put the money in escrow so that third parties can claim later from the amount? Should they be entitled to this amount?
The, my answer is, I am not, I have not been informed by the company if they are willing to put that in escrow since that has never been a part of the discussion as far as the implementation, implementation of the arbitration award is concerned.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. I yield to the other members, Mr. Chairman.
Just for clarity, Attorney Obara, when you said the total amounts paid of rentals, did that include advanced payment as per contract?
I, I would not be in a position, Your Honor, to, to answer your question if it included advanced payment, Your Honor.
Thank you, Attorney Lawana. I'd rather the Honorable Lawana is recognized.
Thank you, my Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I ask inquiry based on Item 1B in 1C?
Yes.
And of course, good afternoon to our visitors, Attorney Mandapat in the group, and of course, my fellow barangay officials who are here. Well, we are, it is, we are unfortunate today that the representatives from the B C D A, G H M C are not around. So, because most of our questions, especially, of course, on my part, will be to them. But anyway, I would like to ask members of the 13 barangays, the movement, who are here. But before that, Mr. Chairman, again, I would like to mention what I have said last time regarding the issues on us, especially on the 19 conditionalities, particularly condition number 14, the segregation. And last time, I mentioned that we are categorized into three, and that is very clear. I hope the 13 barangay, punong barangays particularly are very much aware on that. That first, as I said, we have the barangays under the B C D A title. Second, we have the barangays under the John Hay Reservation. And thirdly, these are the barangays which being claimed by John Hay or B C D A that under John Hay Reservation. But we have a legitimate catty in kaltis. So, yun po ang barangay introduction ko last time. So, I would like to ask, in particular, issues from the punong barangays from the three groups. And if I may be allowed that, I will speak in behalf of the third party or third group, which is the kaltis in kaltis. There again, we are, we are unfortunate that they are not here, but I hope this will be recorded and that it will be, of course, the official records. That ayaw gamin nga kwa, as our particular Luwakshan, Kam 7, Luwakan proper, Luwakan Liwanag, part of Kam 7, and a part of our production, we are the areas wherein there are legitimate kaltis in kaltis, which were approved, of course, by the, ibig sabihin, dumaan tayo sa proseso. So that, just want to manifest that, based on the meeting with the technical working group before, wherein we've been attending, tayo lahat, mga punong barangays, that time, ang usapan po natin nun was that, kung mapapatunayan basi dun sa technical working group wherein in C I P D, in our members of this, na legitimate yung kalti at sa yung kati na yan, all they have to do is simply recognize, and that's it, we are segregated. Yun po ang usapan natin dun, and that is still binding. So, yun po ang stand natin. Especially that in our audience, we have landowners and, of course, the kalti owners who are here. So, we will stand to that, to that agreement. Now, on the part of the B C D A, I would like to ask particularly punong barangay, first Bakungan, please come forward, I have some, please take your seat. My inquiry to you, Cap, is that, of course, since 19, way back 10 years ago, or maybe less than 10 years, some part of Scout Barrio were already, shall we say segregated, because they have already awarded the titles, their lots. And according to Mr. Subrapen, Mr. Casanova last time, I think it's more or less 90%. May we know from you if it's true that it is on more or less 90, more than 95% I think, were already given their titles coming from the B C D A? O kumbaga, naitransfer na yung titulo sa kanila, which is, of course, under the B C D A title? May we know if it is correct?
Yes, good afternoon, Your Honors. Yung sinasabi po ni Mr. Casanova na mga 90%, well, as far as we are concerned, ang alam namin, may mga 6 pa na hindi nabigyan ng titles. But, yun lang po sa kuwan, tinatayuan ng bahay namin yun. Para sa amin, we still got some problems that we are incurring right now. Kasi po, ang problema namin yung function ng barangay namin eh, which is, hindi kami makagalaw ng function ng aming barangay na hindi kami nagpapaalam sa kanila. Yes, because one very good example, meron kaming mga projects dyan, dalawa, as of now, they were stopped. Pero yung dalawang project namin na yun is based on our approved development plan and it is funded by this, the city. Ngayon, ang ginagawa nila, kung hindi ka nakapag, nakapagpaalam sa kanila, they will not, if they don't approve it, they will stop it. Pero paano yan? Paano kami makakagalaw ang function namin ng mga barangay? Ang madami ho kami magi, nararanasan na problema as of now. Ang alam ng mga kasama namin dito, kami daw ay maswerte kasi nakuha na namin ang loti namin. But in reality, we still encountered some problems. Madami po, sa cutting of trees, sa peace and order, kahit na yung income namin na maliliit, hindi ho kami makagalaw. One very good example again is yung camping area namin dyan, which is, yes, yun po ang pinakamalaking source of income namin dyan. Ever since, nandyan na yung camp kontsyo na yan. Nung dumating po sila, that was, they called me, that was, I think, that was two years ago. Tinawagan po ako, sinabi nila na dapat yung mga nagkacamp dyan magbayad sa loob ng John Hay sa kanila. Sabi ko, hindi ho pwede yan. We have an ordinance, sinabi ko sa kanila. And that is the only, alam nyo naman, yun lang ang source of income namin dyan. And even the licensing, yung barangay clearances, business clearance, sumulat sa amin si, si Mayor to check those establishment inside John Hay, hindi ho kami pinayagan, that was last year. Eh, yung mga kuwan, source of income namin din yun, na maliliit lang, pero nakakatulong din sa amin. So, there are a lot of problems, even the tree cutting po, yung dead trees. 2010 po, meron kaming 11 dead trees. Nag-secure kami ng permit to, to cut sa kanila. Sa kanila ka po kami pupunta and then they will just tell us what to do. And then, i-refer po kami sa, sa D N R. After that, kami na po ang nagtatransact between D N R and the barangay. The worst thing is, lahat ng babayaran, binabayaran namin. Until now, hindi pa namin napapaputol yung mga kahoy namin just because they are collecting as, the payment of about 25,000. Kasi yung isang puno dun, they, it's worth 20, I mean 2,000 or 2,5, depende po sa kalaki. And we don't have any money, wala naman tayong, kahit si Councilor Lawana, hindi naman tayo nagba-budget ng tree cutting. So, and dun, yung punong kahoy, hinihintay namin ma, matinaga na ako. Now, ah, the problem is, sino nga'y nga tati liable to? Nukasperin na dana disgrasya, is it as the barangay, is it B C D A or the city? We did that, ma'am, kaya paspasalamat kami matikwa, iti set mo. And the city, taga min, isuda ti mangtultulong kami ni, o dati matitinaga na kayo, ay ban mo isuda. May tumulong piwan, yung da, the, the, may isang madijayka, they, they go there and then they just take pictures. And then, after that, they leave. Ure lang kumapag merienda, di tadi kami nagpukan na umpay, kayo da dijay. Now, siguro ti ararami din milangan akit, iristista mi ako daki merienda, ita, isingar mi to kini kwa. Happy Councilor. But anyway, daki, daki kuwan, daki problema ma, amin daki ta. I am assuring that these problems, maranasan din ng mga kuwan, mga adjacent barangay, until such time that hindi ho ma-segregate ang, ang barangay.
Yes, actually, Cap, that's true. It's not only in your, in Scout Barrio, but the whole 13 barangays, that kami nga, even, even we are not yet segregated, and dun pa sila. They are all, parehas po ang ating mga, mga sentiments regarding yung actions nila. One last question which I would like to ask one of you before we ask the others. I remember, by the way, as of now, ang Scout Barrio po ay one of the top nurtures in terms of crime. We have that, we have that record because we are in the Simpoak Station 4. In terms of crimes, yes. In, in our Poak Station 4, because we are composed, peace and order, peace and order. Because we, we are the Simpoak Station 4. And before, before that, hindi, the reason I asked, I said this because I have to relate with other issues. Yun nga, pag yung mga, I think also, Devco is aware of this. Kung may mga nangyari dun sa loob ng John Hay, particularly itong Ayala hab and of course, part of the economic zone, kung problema naman, dadalhin naman sa barangay and it report nila kung may mga, may mga crimes na nangyari. So, in short, tumaas ang, ang record ng, records ng Scout Barrio in terms of crime rate dahil sa Camp John Hay. So, in short, parang unfair na kung kasu i-report natin under Scout Barrio yan, wala namang barangay Camp John Hay. So, actually, that's one of the reason. And related to that, Cap, I, I remember that one time, we have the existing Silusi Kompak or the Substation 4 dati, near the junction of this, of your Scout Barrio. And I think there was a move before. And I think, uh, there was a move before of, uh, GHMC, that they want to claim that space, that particular structure. Ang gusto nila ata, ikukunin yun. Ano bang nangyari dun, cap, kip?
Uh, sir, uh, ganito yun, uh, 'yung first question niyo po, muna, 'yung uh, sa peace in order. Actually, uh, every, uh, every year po, merong uh, report coming from Substation Four, uh, that is quarterly, ano, uh, counselor? Uh, na dumating sa amin, that we have eleven cases dun sa barangay namin. Now, uh, dun sa, sa reports na binibigay namin dun sa, sa Substation Four, within the span of four ye- uh, four months, dalawa lang po ang kuwan namin, ang nangyari dun sa barangay namin. Nine ang nangyari dun sa loob ng, ng John Hay, kaya po naging eleven, kami ang top toucher po.
Yun nga, pero inako niyo, ang recording, pumunta sa barangay Scout Barrio.
Pumunta po sa barangay namin, that's why we, we tried to write, uh, we wrote the, the station commander about this, uh, data, and they explained that, uh, the nine, nine cases or, uh, cases were, uh, sa, galing po sa kuwan, sa John Hay. Now, yun, yun, yun po ang isang problema namin, kasi, siyempre, kami, we try to make our, uh, barangay very peaceful, and then here comes, na- na- nakikita nila, madami kaming crime na nangyayari dun. So, yun, 'yung sinasabi pang, second is this, they want to, uh, uh, get the, uh, the Substation, 'yung kuwan Kompak dun. Yes, uh, they wrote us a letter, that, uh, they want to get that, uh, portion of, uh, that, uh, building, because sa kanila daw yun. And then 'yung pag, uh, paglalagyan nila sa, ang, ang gagawin daw po nila dun is, uh, 'yung gagawing, uh, security office nila. Eh, yun, we made a resolution, kami mga, sa district namin, na hindi namin kailangan ng security guard dun sa kuwan, sa, sa, sa barangays namin, we need the police. And then, uh, yun po, hindi na po nila tinuloy. Now, ganun po ang nangyayari dun sa barangay namin, that's why we are really, we want that our barangay be segregated already. So that, 'yung mga ganuns, kasi sabi nila, pagmamayari pa nila 'yung mga structures dun. And, tignan niyo, kinukuhanan nila 'yung kuwan, they have already, they are already moving to get those spaces, open spaces that were, uh, there in our barangay. Paano na, kukukunin 'yung basketball court namin, 'yung chapel, gagawin na kung ano-anong gagawin nila ng opisina? Wala na, wala na kaming purpose na, wala ng barangay dun. So we are still being controlled by BCD. Kung ano ang gusto lang mangyari sa barangay namin, at, until now. So, duwa nga rin ngat pay suti gobyerno mi apo. Which, uh, we still believe that, sapay kumata, tulungan na kami apo nga may segregate, totally segregate, yet the barangay mi, not only on our barangay, lahat kaming, uh, within the reservation. Na ma- may, may segregate koman apo, tapno, may, may salaang ti katungtung mi, no hangasi kayo. Jela nga po ti, kahit may nga, tulung nga, nga, may tulong yu- sikani, amin nga kuwa, thirteen barangays. Thank you.
Uh, Mister Chairman, uh, may I continue?
Please proceed.
Thank you, uh, well, uh, related to that, of course, tama 'yung sabi mo na yun nga, even us, even me, hindi ko alam kung ano bang gobyerno ko is it the BCD or City of Baguio, especially in the implementation of projects, programs in our barangays. Now, uh, I would like to also to short, uh, to ask shortly, si Kapitan Bukad, because, uh, for the information of this august body, uh, sila po ang, uh, tinatarget ng GHMC right now, as a pilot project again, for the segregation. So, as an update, uh, meron ng series of consultation with the, because ang hillside kasi, medyo, uh, tatlong klase ang, uh, loti dun. First, there are areas that is considered really verified as BCD titles. My portion even that, uh, recently na found out namin na may kalti na mali dun. And of course, others are regular titles. Now, we are only particular on the BCD titles. Wherein, uh, there are, uh, yun po ang pinapunterian ng BCD, na gawing pilot project again. Uh, seemingly similar with that of Scout Barrio, pero ang, may mga terms and conditions na, uh, magkaiba lang, pagkaibaan dun sa Scout Barrio. Cap, may we know, kung ilan ba 'yung bahay na yun na pinapunterian ng, uh, BCD, at ano ba 'yung scheme na gusto nila? Kindly explain to us shortly, 'yung tungkol dun.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, the Honorable, uh, City Councilor and ABC President, as well to, as well as to our Acting Chair and to the Honorable Members of this body. Well, uh, I wish to inform, uh, everyone that indeed, uh, Councilor Lawana was correct when he stated that Hillside barangay has been made as a pilot project for the BCD and GHMC as far as segregation is concerned. Well, as so far, we have, uh, forty-five, uh, structures, uh, involved in our beloved, uh, community, and these lots, uh, were, uh, surveyed through BCD's, uh, funding. Well, that was according to them, because we never paid a single centavo really, as far as the survey, uh, is concerned. So, according to them, they allotted, uh, three million for, uh, this, uh, survey. And I don't know if, uh, this include, uh, other barangays. I believe, uh, that would be, uh, the, the plan, that is to include other, uh, barangays out of the three million, uh, funding, uh, front, uh, fund, uh, from, uh, BCD. And according to them, since, uh, it was, the survey was already conducted with the subdivision and, uh, individual, uh, survey plan, they had to release that individual survey plan, uh, before, uh, the year ends, uh, two thousand fifteen. And after that, once, uh, the recipients or stakeholders have this, uh, individual survey plan, we will no longer ask the permit from BCD or GHMC for such improvements, but rather, we would, uh, secure from SIBAO or from the City Buildings and Architecture Office to issue the permit, which is a blessing for us, of course, because you know very well that, uh, for the past decades, uh, we could not improve our, uh, structures or respective, uh, houses without the permit from, uh, GHMC or BCD. So, when that will happen, I guess it would be a blessing for everybody, especially so that we are now in the bargaining, uh, process or stage as far as the price for the per square meter is concerned. Because, uh, they have, uh, given, uh, census form to every affected, uh, stakeholder stating if, what would be the amount that you can afford to pay per square meter. And of course, uh, there are so many, uh, figures that, uh, came out, ranging from, uh, two hundred up to one thousand. And, uh, I guess, uh, most, uh, of the amount, uh, that came out, uh, would be under, uh, five hundred, uh, I believe so.
Yes, cap, if I may, uh, yes, we are aware of that, that, uh, yun na nga, ongoing na 'yung, uh, proseso na yan, for the forty-five houses. So, ano ba ang, uh, timeframe na binigay ng, uh, BCD, GHMC, as to the final amount? Kasi, alam po natin yan, uh, you've been inviting me also that, uh, one of your meeting, kung, uh, ano ba, magkano ba ang dapat na bayaran ng forty-five houses na yun, sabi mo nga, more or less, baka, hindi naman abot ng five hundred, and I, I'm, I'm sure that, of course, GHMC will also favor that, that amount. So, kailan ba, ano bang timeframe na binigay sa atin ng, uh, GHMC?
Well, uh, according, uh, to them, uh, Honorable, uh, Counselor, before the year ends. Yes.
Anyway, uh, thank you, cap, uh, hope that will be, that anyway, that will be recorded, lahat ng mga pinag-usapan natin. Last question, Mister Chair, uh, anyway, si Cap Bukad na lang din, uh, can you update us on the issue regarding the, uh, water rights? Because, uh, if you remember, three or four months ago, we just seem, we just received, uh, received, uh, notice coming from National Water Resources Board, that, uh, saying that GHMC BCD applied for water rights of our existing, uh, springs, particularly in your area, which is of course, some are from, uh, some from Dagshan, in our production getting from your area, from, uh, Greenwater, from, uh, Happy Hollow, and I think, uh, some part of Scout Barrio. So, I believe that, uh, since you've been had, uh, you, you have, uh, conducted series of meeting and consultation with them, what is the update regarding the issue? Can you update us briefly?
Well, uh, just to inform, uh, this, uh, august body, uh, of course, with the assistance of, uh, the Honorable Acting Chair, uh, Counselor Peter Fianza, last July, uh, twenty-five, we have a hearing together with the personnel from the National Water Resources Board and representatives from, uh, John A. Management Corporation. And for the barangays, uh, we were assisted, of course, by the Honorable, uh, City Councilor Fianza. And the update as far as our, uh, community is concerned is that we found out, uh, through ocular inspection with the presence of, uh, BCD personnel and GHMC, that our spring water source is not commercially viable. Well, uh, I guess, uh, we need to bank on that, we need to believe on that, based on our ocular inspection, that it is not commercially viable.
You mean to say the, uh, your area, our area only in hillside, or will it includes, uh, uh, other, uh, areas such as in Greenwater?
Uh, just, uh, our area, Honorable, uh, Counselor, it is per area wherein they conducted the ocular inspection. And, uh, from there, uh, they also told us that, uh, they are just aftering to protect and secure our spring water source, because they are afraid that this will be taken by other entities. I hope, uh, they are sincere on that. So, on our part, uh, we are positive then, that this will not be taken over by BCD as far as the situation of our spring water source is concerned. So, they told us that we need to withdraw our opposition. We need to withdraw our opposition, but then, uh, uh, we told them that they should give us the assurance that this will only be used exclusively by hillside residents or the stakeholders for, uh, future purposes, and that whoever will be, uh, under the leadership of BCD or GHMC, uh, should no longer, uh, put their interest in putting such, uh, commercialization in that particular area, and I need the support of the City Council so that, uh, this will never be taken from us, because, uh, we have been using this for, uh, the cu- uh, the past decades, uh, since time in Memorial, Honorable Counselor.
Yes, cap, uh, yun nga, ang point natin is, uh, are they saying that, uh, once we will be withdrawing our, uh, opposition, especially on your part, they will be also, uh, withdrawing the, uh, the application from the National Water Resources Board?
Well, uh, that should be the case, Honorable, uh, Counselor, and we are hoping and praying that we will arrive at that, uh, or with that, uh, situation.
Anyway, uh, we will be having a meeting with the group again, so that we can address that issue. Uh, how about in, uh, Greenwater? May we know from, uh, Capitana Lambak, uh, ganun din ba ang sinabi nila? Na, 'yung sa atin dun, kasi, uh, for the information of this august body, the Greenwater Spring, yun po ang isa sa pinakamalaking spring na the supplying part of Luakan, Scout Barrio, Hillside, Gabrilas, Silang, and other part of, uh, the, uh, barangays below, uh, John Hay. So, anyat, anyatin bagada parehas ba nga, kunada nga, uh, han nga viable the spring tayo, or did he said something different?
Uh, good afternoon to everybody. Siguro, sa balik ti awat ko, niya, ti awat ko, kat, kahit na nga laan gamin, so nga aduti bagbagada nga rason. Ngamda kami jay Greenwater, intak kami jay ilaban mi de danu mi. Han mi nga itulok nga laan ti dyan eh, whatever happened. Tutala daman ni Counselor Fianza nga, kanda kayo nga tungtulong kada kami isong, at paspasalamat kami unay. Ngamha mi nga itulok nga laan ti dyan hiti danu meta, in develop mi da jay since time in Memorial during the American time. Isu da ba ti nangisuro, no kas ano nga aramidan mi da jay, pagalaan mi ti ob danu mi. Isu nga inga na takta, han mi nga itulok nga laan ti dyan eh, ure ipaino na pintas ti bagbagada, han tayong may bagada ita. Isu nga da kami, pati segregation, ti kahit miket isigregit da gaminan da di barangay mi. Di ganyan thirteen barangays, tapno awante problema. Takta ti kahit na, structure lang han mot ang agbalin, han kami nga itulok nga anya iti nga laan da, ti danu mi, kan, kailangan nga isigregit da di barangay mi, da jela ang ti dawdawatan mi. Kat, imay kami ditueng nga buong council, nga ipadanon ti kahit ititakta umi, jela ang ti may bagak.
Thank you, uh, Capitana, uh, parehas tayo, pati da kami jay Dagshan, uh, we really talaga nga ilaban mi mot jay, because the spring mi jay upper Dagshan, sub-supply na ti upper, lower, hillside, and part of Camp Seven, for the information. So, also na part, uh, we should be vigilant, tapno amutay 'yung, uh, kuwa, because we don't know, still, the application is still, uh, binding, so I think we have to conduct a meeting with our group. Anyway, uh, that's all, Mister Chairman, for my, uh, first round.
Uh, thank you. Well, anyway, just for clarity and for the information of our colleagues, there are five pending water applications, water rights applications of BCD to at Luakan, then one each at, uh, Greenwater, Hillside, and, uh, Dagshan? Or, uh, Hillside, Hillside. Now, each of these barangays have different situations, so there were different offers made by BCD. But, uh, more or less, particularly Happy Hollow, is covered by an ADsBPT, ancestral domain, so it has a different story, so different manifestations will be made later on relative to the application as per agreement in the June twenty-five hearing of the cases. So let's proceed. In our list, we have recognized the Honorable Luwan first, and then the Honorable Bagbagan. For the Honorable Yangot to be recognized, may we put on record the presence of the Honor- of Honorable Yangot without having the need of a roll call?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have only two questions addressed to, of course, our guests this afternoon, Mister, uh, two distinguished lawyers, uh, of, uh, C. C H Deepco. Uh, first, uh, since we are not a party to that arbitration case, may we request, uh, from your good office, if you could provide us a decision of the arbitrator? May we request, if it could be, if we can, if you could do that, you provide, uh, the City Council a copy of that, uh, arbitration case? you provide the city council a copy of that arbitration case? So can you do that, hand it officially to our city secretary?
In response to that, we need to ask permission first from the arbitration tribunal. Because under the special rules and procedure of the arbitration tribunal, this decision is considered as confidential. It cannot be released without the consent of the parties to the arbitration together with the approval of the arbitration tribunal.
In short, as of now, we cannot avail.
I regret to say that we cannot.
Can you make that initiative, sir? If we could get one copy, if it is allowed under your request, if it could be allowed?
Yes, I would suggest that you write us formally a letter request, so that that will be the basis for us to make the request to the arbitration tribunal.
Thank you. We'll do that later.
Thank you.
Again, your contract with the BCDA is only for twenty-five years, renewable for another twenty-five years. Is that the way we understand it, sir?
That is correct.
In the locators of John Hay, do we mean to understand also that what you extended to them is only twenty-five years, renewable for twenty-five years, or fifty years?
The provisions of the original contract between BCDA and CH Devco, providing for an initial period of twenty-five years, renewable for another twenty-five years, is deemed incorporated as part of the contract with the locators and other buyers of properties inside Camp John Hay?
In short, you're telling us that as far as the locators are concerned, they are aware of that contract that it is also renewable to them?
Yes, sir.
But how about the contract that you entered with them? Is it for more than twenty-five years or limited to twenty-five years?
No, the LWDs in particular issued in favor of the persons who bought properties inside Camp John Hay specifically provides that it shall be until twenty-fourty-six? Or fifty years?
In short, you borrowed the terms and conditions from that you have entered with the BCDA?
Yes.
And you enforce that also to the locators? Is that the way we understand it?
Yes. Again, the provisions of the original lease contract between BCDA and CH Devco was incorporated as part of the contract entered into with the third party?
Is your contract with the locators also confidential? Or is it for public, could be allowed to be furnished to this august body? So that we could comply, we could scrutinize if what you're saying is correct in relation to that contract? If we could give us at least one contract?
We will need to ask the permission of the other contracting party, referring to the locator. If you're just asking for one, for one sample contract, we will ask management to ask one locator to agree to it, and then we can furnish you a copy of that contract?
We will do that in our regular session. Thank you. Then to the thirteen barangay officials, which are within John Hay.
Ti problema tayo no mamingisand, tagi takay kayo niya. Idjay marakip ko, idjay inararamid me jay loknab because it also part of the reservation ti part. Tagi jay matintinag nga kayo. Mabalintay yung apukanan under the principle of nuisance. In padas me mat kat awam mat ti hinmabol nga taga John Hay. So if the purpose is for the protection of the public, you'll review the principle of nuisance, mabalinda jay pokanun yo. Uray bagay yung asyak ti nang ibaga. Mabalintapno, we use that, we applied in the loknab, and we succeeded. Handa mat nagfile ti darom, orain men wag file that, at awam mat isu nga. It is applicable also in your respective barangays. Pero tikas tayo, mas may met no dati barangay resolution. Ngaday tang nga kayo kat delikado, isu nga pokanun tayo. You can, using the principle on nuisance. Siguro kita niyo the principiuti nuisance, isu ti aramid an yo. Uray bagay yung asyak ti nang ibaga. We did it in loknab once kat handa mat nagtagari? Pinasapas mea ni kayo. Di, ti rimidyo. Kat caro no, simple no panag tutudo di, no dati natupakan, o no balay nga nadada, na pay maisublimpay. Thank you.
The Honorable Dipunong barangay of
Your Honors, with regards to the tree cutting problem. Gamin na nagaduti problema minsir nga, nang nangyayari G and M. Just last year, natin nagandiskilaan at tukulijing nga kayo. Then inayban me ti SEPMO, tim bagadag pakadagetti John Hay. Nagbayag sir nga ku, ti respondi, even the John Hay bagadagat, sige, ay katay niyo lap talitan. But how can we move? Sino ti surutan magyung mununa? So, sa, kinami lang apo, nasasi at nga may mesa lang kumatik kasasaumin. Sumar kumanu, masegregate di ti barangays. Si kayo lang ti kasasaumin dati city. Haanan nga pa kasta-kasta pay lang iti pagalaan iti permiso, sir.
For the meantime, apo kapitan nga, pay na sig-sigrigit, no dati problema yung nga kasi kasi ti panang aramid. Ayat da jay.
Let's see here. Sige.
Yung dati problema no, awan ti chinsu yung.
Awan yarod, ta dapat ti provide damin di ta, ta kayo dang ro. So si kami amit agprovide, si kami pay amit ti agbayad. So problema ta, takinami ni sir.
Naramid ko yung di panak nagbulot, ti chinsu ti biniko. Sami chinninson. So nga, pay orain tayo pay nga maaramid ti aksidinte. That is my advice, because we did it in barangay loknab. Syak ti barangay kapitan edi two thousand eight ijay, isu nga inaramid ko kat takdrak da jay nga inaramid ko.
Nagraigat sir, ta pati DNR kat maka ku, depende manan dayan, adong ah ku, adong agencies ki kumotrakin nga ti apo. Sumar kat, dayta nakdakal ti problema minal talaga, as being di barangays, mga ba, di enti barangay me. So anyway, sir, we will advise you surutan me, tasapay kuma, want ti egidim demanda kinyami.
Thank you. Kd chair recognizes the Honorable Bagbagan?
Gureka, apo kapitan, apo kapitan na Bakungan. Dalantida magak. Regarding the cutting of trees, you said that you went to SEPMO? And SEPMO directed you to BCDA?
Yes, sir.
Does the mayor know about this?
That? Yes, Your Honor, kasi the one in charge is, I think, Mr. Miles Estepa, and he was there.
Yes, but does the mayor personally know that this is the procedure of SEPMO? That if you need a tree cutting permit, you have to get it from BCDA? Does the mayor know about this?
I am not sure, Your Honor.
Maybe we should inform the mayor about this, because this is really, as I said, when President Casanuba was here, that is really very difficult for you to govern your barangays with BCDA hovering over you like a sword of Damocles, that is what I said. So I think this should really be resolved. Now, you were saying about two projects that were stopped. What are these two projects?
One is the covered bleachers, Your Honor, at our field camping area. And second is the shower room and latrine for the campers.
And you said this were funded by the city government?
Yes, of course. It is based on our development plan, Your Honor.
And what did you do when it was stopped by BCDA?
They asked me to provide some plans, and then give it to them for review and approval. So what we did is, we gave it to them, but until now, no response.
So I think this case is, the mayor should be informed. It may be the city legal office should be informed. Because I do not think that BCDA has the authority to stop government projects. So I think you better, you better inform the mayor about this and maybe ask his advice regarding the stoppage of these two projects.
Yes, Your Honor.
When was this? When was it stopped?
Last month, I think that was last month, Your Honor.
You have to really go and see the mayor, so that he will give you, because this will affect not only your barangay, but also the city of Baguio. Yba, parang nukunam nga duati gobyerno jay Scott Barrio. Kaslamat lang ah, duati gobyerno di ti syudad ti Baguio, kasi amat lang ti karigan na di jay, diba?
That's what we are feeling right now, Your Honor. Thank you.
So may I, may I proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
And I would like to direct my question, my succeeding questions to Attorney Kubara. So you were here when President Casanuba was here?
Yes, sir.
And according to President Casanuba, the agreement between BCDA and CH Devco expired. Do you remember that? He admitted that the agreement between you and BCDA was terminated. And the legal basis of that was because of the arbitral decision?
I think, Your Honor, the more accurate way of describing it is that
Not, no, I'm sorry, not expired, but it was terminated.
I would not characterize it as terminated. What the arbitral award called for is for the return of the lease premises and all improvements included therein to BCDA upon the payment of BCDA of the 1.421 billion, representing the rentals previously paid by the company to BCDA.
So are you saying that the arbitration did not touch on the period of the lease between BCDA? And it is not an issue in that case?
It touched. The arbitral award touched the issue of the period. Because, but this is the necessary effect of the directive issued by the arbitration tribunal for CH Devco to turn over the lease premises to BCDA. So in effect, it has the effect of terminating the lease contract between the parties.
So you are now admitting that there is that word terminating of the lease contract between BCDA and CH Devco?
Would you rather, the chair suggest, would you rather use the term rescinded? Because that was the term used by, in the arbitral award?
So maybe I would go with the presiding officer. That maybe we could, could you read into the record the portion wherein the arbitral arbitration decided regarding the lease period between CH Devco and BCDA?
We regret to inform the body that we cannot read even a portion of the arbitration decision on the ground that it is considered as confidential.
Okay, anyway, you admitted that there was rescission? Or you are taking it back?
Yes, the proper term, Your Honor, is rescission.
Okay. So and for us, we have already asked this with President Casanuba. How about CH Devco? Does it recognize the nineteen conditionalities?
Yes, the CH Devco recognizes all of the nineteen conditionalities. And not just recognizes it, but respects it.
Thank you very much. So based on the nineteen conditionalities, the city government is supposedly to be, based on the computation of twenty-five percent of whatever is to be collected by BCDA will go to the city government, is it not? Now, before your case with BCDA was filed, you were willing to pay an amount to the city government based on that computation, is it not? Even Mayor Dumogan was telling us that you were even willing to compromise and give an amount to the city government?
I think, Your Honor, the offer of CH Devco was made to BCDA. But it has the effect, the offer of paying a a rescheduling eh. It's an offer of rescheduling the payment of the back rentals owed by CH Devco then to BCDA. Now, I was made to understand that because of that offer, since the city government is entitled to twenty-five percent, then it will receive twenty-five percent of whatever amount CH Devco will pay to BCDA.
I think the mayor is privy to that proposal. And what I'm trying to point out is, since you said, premise on what you said that the city government is not affected by the arbitral decision between BCDA and CH Devco, are you still willing to pay that amount to the city government?
Referring, Your Honor, to the twenty-five percent?
Yes.
Your Honor, I was reading the nineteen conditionalities. And as far as the condition referring to the twenty-five percent is concerned, it specifically states there that that is the obligation of BCDA to the city government. It is not the obligation of CH Devco to the city government. In other words, the obligation of CH Devco is simply to pay the rent due to BCDA under the lease agreement. Now, based on these nineteen conditionalities, whatever payment CH Devco makes to BCDA, then BCDA now has the obligation under these nineteen conditionalities to remit twenty-five percent of that to the city government.
Yes, but the twenty-five percent, and the basis of the twenty-five percent is the amount collected by BCDA from CH Devco, is it not?
Yes, that is true.
So the source of that twenty-five percent is from CH Devco?
Hindi po.
Diba ganon? Kasi, kung walang makukulitang CH Devco, ay kung walang makukulitang BCDA sa CH Devco, wala silang ibabayad sa city government?
Aha.
Diba ganon?
Aha.
So, based on the computation of twenty-five percent, and as I was saying, before this case was filed, there was an amount, there was already a computation, based on the twenty-five percent, there is already an amount being offered to the city government. But I think it was overtaken by this arbitral decision. And instead of BCDA paying CH Devco, the decision was reversed, and it was, instead of CH Devco being paying BCDA, it is now BCDA paying CH Devco in the amount of 1.42 billion, diba?
I am not privy to that discussion.
Decision in the arbitral, ano?
As far as the arbitration tribunal is concerned, it ran As far as the arbitration tribunal is concerned, it rendered a decision directing B C D A to return 1.421 billion pesos representing the rent paid by C J H Devco to B C D A during the entire period of the lease from the beginning up to the present.
Because my point is, did the, were you exonerated? Of course, it should be B C D A, but then because of this arbitral decision, it seems that you were exonerated from, from paying an amount to B C D A which in turn will be paid to the city government, is it not?
The decision of the arbitration tribunal likewise called, likewise directed and ruled that B C D A is not entitled to collect the 3.3 billion pesos that it is claiming as alleged back rentals of C J H Devco.
Now, what I am, as I said, the premise is before the case was filed, di ba? Nung hindi pa napapalitong kasunang ito, there was even some sort of a negotiation wherein C H Devco is also willing to, to pay to B C D A and B C D A will in turn pay also the twenty-five percent of the city. Are you privy to that?
I am not privy to that, your honor.
So itong pinakamasaklap sa lahat. Because of this, nawalan na, walang, nasiro na 'yung city of Baguio, di ba?
It has that effect. In fact, your honors, if I may be allowed to point out, ano? Ah, there is no question that B C D A received 1.421 billion rentals from C J H Devco from the beginning of the lease contract up to the present. Now, it was also reported to us by the president of B C D A during the last hearing that they have so far remitted 245 million pesos. But that is subject to confirmation by the city government if that amount has been received. But regardless of the amount involved, we would just like to point out that if you get twenty-five percent of 1.421 billion pesos, that will be in the amount of about 355 million pesos.
Yun ang nawala sa city government.
In other words, in other words, even assuming that B C D A paid 245 million pesos, it is apparent based on a mathematical computation that it is still lacking in remitting about 110 million pesos to the city government.
Now, I'll go to the point of the rescission of the lease contract. Now, you said that their contract with B C D A was rescinded because of the decision? Now, but you said, but you also stated that locators are given until 2046, di ba? Because as for us, you said that you respect the nineteen conditionalities in order number sixteen. In number sixteen, since the contract has been rescinded, the transfer of ownership should already be given, turned over to the city of Baguio, is it not?
Yes.
So how could it be turned over when your contract with the locators is still until 2046, when the rescission already took immediately upon the decision of this, upon the arbitral decision?
Okay. To answer that question, your honor, let me read to you the provision of condition number sixteen, which calls for the transfer of land and facility ownership. And it says, "B C D A shall effect the transfer of ownership of the land and its buildup and improved structures within the zone from the B C D A to the Baguio City Government upon the expiration of the land lease agreement between the B C D A and its designated developer in accordance with the policy and procedures provided by law." Okay. Now, you are now asking, is there not a conflict between the present petition filed by the company, C J H Devco, in the Court of Appeals, asking that the contracts entered into with third parties be respected until 2046 in connection with what is being directed under this condition? My answer here is it would depend. It would depend. In other word, ah, in, in other words, the city government can ask B C D A to transfer the properties to it, including all the improvements as provided for under this conditionality. Now that you are the owner of this property, the city government now is given the delicate task of coming up with a policy that will be to the best interest of the, of the city. Now, you can, you can choose to say that as the owner of the property, I'm going to claim it, including all the improvements there it. I'm going to claim all this and say that that is the property of the city government.
So are you saying that your lease contract with the, with those locators will already be rescinded and as you said, the city government will already take over?
At this point, at this point, ho, this is what, this is my, my personal, this is my personal take on the matter, your honor, ano? It is important, your honor, that-
Do we understand that what you are saying will, will, will bind C H Devco or it will only be your personal?
It is, it is my personal opinion. It is my personal opinion at this point. In order to be fair to all the parties concerned, including the, this, this body, so that there will be no misunderstanding or miscommunication as far as my answer today will be, is concerned, your honor. Ah, this is my own recommendation to the council for your consideration. Being a recommendation, it is subject to your approval or disapproval. Ang sa akin po ay ganito. Kapag na-implement na po itong kondisyon na ating pinag-usa, ating pong sinabi na kung saan ang Camp Jan Hay, kasama na po ang lahat ng improvement na yan, ay mapupunta na sa city government. Meron ho siyang kasing kaukulan na responsibilidad sa syudad upang pangalagaan ng interes nito. Kung inyo pong, kung inyo pong pag-aaralan ng sitwasyon, meron na pong buhay na komunidad sa loob ng Camp Jan Hay. Nandiyan na po ang mga locators at nandiyan na din po 'yung mga nag-invest. Bumili ng mga lupa o kundi ng mga units para magsilbi na, na retirement home o source of investment nila, pagkakaitaan ng konti na pwede nilang gamitin sa pangaraw-araw nilang kabuhayan. Okay. Kapagka, ang naging desisyon po ng, ng city government ay respetuhin itong mga contracts entered into by third parties, in effect, you're sending a powerful message to the entire community. When I say community, hindi lamang po itong Baguio, kundi pati ho 'yung buong Pilipinas at kasama na rin po ang international community. Kasi tinitignan po nila kung paano ba tinatratong ng ating gobyerno ang mga nag-invest sa, sa, sa property na iyan. So, meron ho kayong, meron ho kayong way of sending out and approving a policy that you will respect these contracts entered into with third parties? And future investors doon sa Camp Jan Hay, kasi kapagka, kapagka tine-cover niyo na 'yan, siyempre ang gagawin ninyo, gusto niyo 'yan i-develop and then i-market for, sa mga investors. At 'yung investors na 'yan, hindi lamang dito sa loob ng Pilipinas, pwede rin sa mga, 'yung mga international investors. Yan ho, binabantayan nila, tinitignan nila, paano ba tatratuhin ng city government of Baguio 'yung mga present investors na? Ngayon, kung inyo pong di-desisyonan, at hindi ko ho sinasabi na 'yun ang ano, no? Ini-impose sa inyo. Pero kung sakali po na-desisyonan ninyo na respetuhin 'yung kontrata ng mga third parties, in effect, you send, you send a powerful message and a strong policy that the city government of Baguio, even if it is not a party to the contract, knows how to respect that contract. At ano magiging epekto nito doon sa mga gusto mag-invest dito sa, sa Camp Jan Hay kapagka ito'y nasa inyo na? Ang isipin nila ay ganito. Kung 'yung city government ka, marunong respetuhin 'yung isang kontrata na hindi naman sila party. Paano pa kaya 'yung kontrata na kung saan sila ang kausap natin? So 'yung confidence that it will, 'yung confidence to invest dyan sa loob ng Camp Jan Hay will be very high. And it's because the city government set out a strong policy, sent out a strong message that contracts will be respected.
So, yeah, we take, thank you for the unsolicited advice. Anyway, thank you very much. Anyway, my last question is, meron pa bang makukolekta ang city of Baguio sa mga locators ninyo? Baka 'yung mga rent na manila ng twenty, hanggang 2046 eh, nakuhan ninyo lahat? Di ba? Or meron pa sila makukolekta? Assuming that those lease contracts will be respected by the city of Baguio?
Aha. Yun ho ang, ang ano po, ano? Ah, kapagka, kapag nag-tracover na po ang city government doon sa Camp Jan Hay, ah, hindi naman sa pinangungunahan ko po ang inyong tanggapan upang desisyonan 'yung bagay na 'yan, pero maliwanag po na meron po kayong kalayaan na makipag-usap doon sa mga third parties na yon at sabihin ko, no are, ah, 'yung tumatay 'yung parang association juice na dapat nilang bayaran, pwede ninyong silang sabihan na base sa mga gagawin namin at proyekto na gagawin ng city government dyan sa loob ng Camp Jan Hay, ito na po ang aming sisingilin na association juice.
Ang tanong ko nga eh, meron bang masisingil pa ang city of Baguio? So what we would like to know is whether mayroon pang natitirang pera na 'yung mga rent, di ba? Yun lang naman. Or you have already collected the advance payment of until 2046, yun lang naman na Attorney, Attorney Ubara?
Okay. Okay, doon po sa pagbebenta noong mga properties, bayad na po yon. So pagka, ano, wala na po kayong masisingil doon? Hindi, para malaman, di ba? Mabuti na ho na sabihin namin ho sa inyo 'yan, kesa naman magpaligo-y ligo-y ako at sagutin ko kayo ng alam ninyo eh, pag nandun na po kayo ay malalaman ninyo ang kasagot, ano, ano? Kasi ganito po ang naging transaksyon po dyan.
For you being honest.
Opo. Doon ho sa mga consideration of for the payment ng mga properties, karamihan po niya kasi fully paid na po sa, sa kumpanya. So kapag fully paid na po, ang sagot po, wala na po kayong makukuha dahil fully paid na po sila. Pero doon sa mga hindi pa fully paid, baka doon ho, meron pa ho kayong maakuha dahil pa, dahil maliwanag na hindi pa naman sila fully paid. Yun ho.
Thank you. Recognize was Attorney, or rather, the Honorable Yangut, then the Honorable Datwin, then the Honorable Kusalan. That's the least. Honorable Yangut first.
Ay.
Yes, I came ahead. Mr. Chairman, before I start, may we know if there are valid kalti and kati holders who are present in the session hall? Kindly raise your hand so that we will know. Kalti, kalti and kalti, yes. About locators from Camp Jan Hay, if there are any, third-party leases? Mr. Chairman, on September 7, 2000, or September 7, 1994, the majority of the city council approved the nineteen conditionalities setting forth the development of Camp Jan Hay. I still remember, I was the ABC president then. And before the, the matter was presented for the approval of the city council, the members of this august body were brought to Subic by B C D A for a trip. And they were, obviously, asking us to vote for the development of Jan Hay. When I was asked, my answer was very simple. You segregate the fourteen barangays in Camp Jan Hay and I will vote. But unfortunately, up to this time, that has not been done. And I can proudly say that I was one among those who did not vote in favor of the nineteen conditionalities. And history would judge this representation, the Honorable Yaronon, the Honorable Judge Idelberto Claraval, the Honorable Elmo Nevada, and the S K representative then, Ms. Florenz Ibara, that we were right all along. Because in my case, the first condition that I set was, segregate to ipaingon unah the fourteen barangays bumutusak nita. But you know, using the terrain of numbers, a caucus was held the night before the session and so the majority decided to vote in favor. And history would judge us, Councilor Yaronon, that we were correct all along. Let me start because these questions were prepared for the session where B C D A was present, but we did not have the opportunity to ask these questions to the resource persons because the president and chairman of B C D A then made a privileged speech and made a litany of who's. And all the other resource persons were not given the equal chance to respond. Let me ask, the, particularly the people of Happy Haloo, I C D P Unong barangay. May we ask you to join us? I have a question. And the other members of the hippo or the Happy Haloo Indigenous Peoples Organization? Kapitán, may ba't itagahappy haloo ang ato dito?
As in, sir, Councilor, may saklangan ako may ta, in may, in may dagmindi di last na invitation you got, handangan na ikantikyan sa isong, sinmarod ngay. So, di balita, Abakmat, the Councilor.
So, ah, Kapitan, yeah. May we know when was your certificate of ancestral domain title issued to your, to the people of Happy Haloo?
Okay, ah, to inform you, the ancestral domain iti Happy Haloo got na it, inter iti ini opisstin C I P D 2006 and na register iti some months of 2009?
2009.
Ah, June, maybe I am not, if I am not mistaken, kasi ako-
Time and again, maulit-ulit, mang-mangatayo di isong segregation di barangay. Anya ka di ti panakaawat mo ta, idi naawat you di certificate of ancestral domain title you? Anya ti pakaawat mo? Ha, na yanga, nasegregate you kuman, no day taket big bigan ti gobyerno?
Ah, to your honor, ah, win koma, ti amomi ijay, nasegregite ta, jenag abilan mimot iti title ket, iti sa Republic Act, iti tresibintiwan. So ti amomi na register, na nasegregite, ngamti problema ng arut ta, haan mo na i-recognize iti B C D A. So isu di iti umap apil kami kanyayu, city council na tulungan da kami kumata, i-recognize ti B C D A. Ta i-recognize mo iti city, isu nga, di to city council na, ah, ina dapiyomot diya H D P P iti Happy Haloo through Councilor Kusalan, 2009, ah, 2009. So, ina dapiyomit diya H D P P ni, last year lang. So, inupdate mi di ads DPP mi last year lang, so naadap inadap di city di. So, di iti no mabalin kuma tulungan da kami ta i recognize iti BCDE. Ta ijay nineteen condition nga ibag-bagatayo, na banggit mo ijay number five, iti conditionalities na no mapertik, adiketa i recognize dakuma. Ngam di iti problema ta inggana tata, uh, han nga rud nga ma i recognize sa ti, ti kogan tata to update you, uh, you, kada kayo nga august body. Di adha ancestral domain mi, adha ij Supreme tata, ta kan kansel nga oti BCDE. So, na dismiss dito ya, uh, artisi. Handa mo tengan napan iti court pa pili, napanda, napan ijay Supreme Court, so adha di Supreme Court tata, so isu di iti ururayan mi. Ngamhan kuma nga maure dayon, no, pak titunulungan ta yu kumata may apply j nineteen condition ijay. Uh, kasi kuma apuh, keta mabalin ba nga ituliko di ko, uru dapat iti. Ta ijay sentiment mimot lang pangke ijaya, inmunanga na salut sujyo kada gitu kaka duwata ti pangke ijaya water rights, water permits nga pa payan iti BCDE. Uh, actually, di ijay keta to update you ijay kuam imot iti Happy Haloo. Hanminga kaya't nga talaga nga ipalubos. Agi, agistan kami ijay may, adha ij nineteen condition nga kunada nga access out iti BCDE. Di Janhey iti danom iti outside Baguio. Kasi mo ti adha ij nineteen condition, so kanya mi no mabalin masurut gi. Uh, so talaga nga upusan ijay. Uh, twin to me, so nga napanda madam agbayani gamin, uh, Janhey president, GHMC president nga napan ijay, napan gamin di barangay mi nga apanda kami i kinasarita, ngamda kami lang, uh, dua kami santu dua nga kagawat kot balita lu kami. Ngakinasarita da nga kunada nga pagga tungtungan di pangke iti water permits. Hanminga, hanminga upuse nun kanu ta pagtungtungan lang nun. Tati di inbagada di kasalain bagam lang iti kaka duwata ta nga i improve da, i improve da. Ngamti problema i improve damut ngam pagbayadan da iti nukas pangarigan man mapan mausar mo tilang ij barangay. Uh, mitruan da gi danom, so agbayad ya agusar. Ketsu ti previous, nganangangyari, since iti, iti cimpuni ponganai, ang kami nga nagbaybayad iti danom. So, kaya't mi nga as is nga kasji, di mangyari kuma, mo'so nga it is in our ancestral domain. Uh, ij, uh, Konselor.
Uh, may sa pay siguro nga ikabil yutika panunutan nyonya. Sakba nga na proven di kontrata, inka ability sudah tibak yo ijay condition number three nga kunana ijay nga the BCDE shall make certain that in no way shall waters, water use within the zone deplete or minimize the water supply of the city, and that the, the water to be used within the zone shall be sourced outside of the City of Baguio kunana di ijay. Ngamha nga masur-surut. So, anyway, na ibagam di kaya't mon Kapitan, kaya't yuman madamag di gi valid kalti holders nga da dito'y, tadadamo ti barangay official siting ada ti kalti na. Kaya't yuman nga ma'amuan tapno ti officialis yutibak yo nga binutusan yo, ammuda ti aramidenda, no malpas nga kundin kami tapno makatulong kami mat kanya yo. Kaya'yo nga da dita nga, ada kalti na nga valid kalti holders nga na i-reistro yo. And then it was not contested within the one-year contestability period. Tomakdor kayo tag saw kayo mo't tahan langan ni apo Kapitan nga da kalti na ti. Agyang kapit ta Kapitan ta dapat iti sumaruno? Ada?
Do you have?
Oh, yan. Misses Kubulan ijay ayanda mic, do or action? Paki bagatina gan yo tapno may record apo?
Good afternoon to everybody. Siak ni Misses Mary, uh, Kelet Kubulan. May sang kalti holder, ito'y dagshan. Dawdawat tak kumata, kada ito yarod pangke segregation, kasi di pangke ti segregation di barangay. Ta kami kumanga da kalti na ti, in trabaho mi paylang idipaylang. Ti amomi, idina, na pasnaitan, talag na kami mati processo. Inalpas nga naitan, kunami akat, ostu matan, ah, na isegregate kami aminan, tapno uh, nawaya kami nga mang improve di jam, nasa at nga aramidan mi ijay. Ngamta ta nga rud, pimasok nga rud mati BCDE, so dawatan mi kumakan ya yo, uh, dito city officials, tulungan da kami kumata. Ado, nabayag matan da giyan, adu mati uh, processo nga nararamid, na ju process nga ostu reijay mo. Ang kami mat nga, uh, nag, since time in memorial, nga da kami ijay, so sabay kumahmat ata, patgan yung ti dawat mi. Thank you.
Uh, dati may sang koncern ko, dito i konseso, no dati panagba budget nya, dati sakka basitiya identify mi nga projects para ti barangay. Any of the punong barangay who are here can react. Anya't i situation tata. Di gi ba night itad previously, in the previous years, na implement ba di g city funded projects. Na may implement kumaji areas within the so-called Janhey reservation. Anybody among you can react tapnamutay ti aramidant yo, kasi I got the impression nga if, uh, if the project is not implemented in a barangay because the, um, uh, GHMC and the BCDA prevent you from implementing those projects, then the projects are simply realigned to other barangays. May we get a reaction from the punong barangay who are here?
May man punong barangay nga hangan implement ti projects da, isu dati kuha, di sampe in implement?
Ni Kapitan, napalulat ta, dati intedoy ijay.
Uh, okay. Uh, ijay Happy Haloo, uh, adu mati project nga nagapu iti city, uh, ini, ini kanyamut lang nga from the Konselor's, gi saguan hundred thousand. Uh, na implement mo't di napalpala bas ta inaramid mi paylangay nga nag tahan damut nga kaya't nga talaga nu awan iti pamalubus da. So, ini sur tapno may aramid di may implement ti project, nagka kumplayo kami ijay kaya't da. So, dagi saguan hundred thousand keta mabiit mo't nga permitan iti Janhey idinapalabas. Ti problema lang idi daytui, di, uh, basketball court mi nga maramid nga inur-urnong mi nga uh, development pan mi. Adati more than six hundred thousand so inpa program mi maramid ya court. So ijay insip ni paynga area ijay asid iti barangay hole. Oh, so gabutan na simpa di ijay, idina yalis di kalsada na simpa di para basketball court mi, handa mutan nga palubusan di basketball court. So, idipaylang last year, August nga in nag, nagsurat kami nga ipalubusan dakuma. Uh, inggana idi kada gitu ketan nga napalubusan, so ijay lang meeting ta yu di napalabas. Ngakuaket idi mo, lun, pride di ijay di lunis mo't kat, adamutan di permit di basketball court. Eh, di nga iti ngayari, ngam actually na one year di. One year nga, tati rasunda idi nalawak kanu. Nalawak keta ij space keta bagida. So, kung kunami bitkas ano nga bagyo kot ancestral domain nga rud. Uh, kasi ako, ngamti problema tata, di agripir iti balay, di iti problema ta di na i bring out lang idinapalabas nga kasi ti problema di kuaket handangan nga ipalubus ti materials nga sumrek. Uh, pati di nga rud, ijay nga rud Happy Haloo, ancestral domain simply di iparit ngay di agi aramid iti balay nga kunada nga agis stand di ij census census nineteen nineties. Anya nga rud ti maramid keta inmadu mati tau, inagana-anak damut so agaramid ati balay dakuma. Di iti problema, ngamta ta tati mararamid. Gabut nga rud ta amamin mo't nga pagdamagan di constituent, kunada i aserkyo di domino. So, adamutan irugugid nga agi aramid iti balay kat no ma dagi jerinder kat, isu di bagan dagi kuang nga damabramag di ranger nga pinala dapayin di. Pinalan di constituent unjerinderan ata apandang pasar-sar dengen. So, kasi mo't gam, sukonak nih, apigay minu lumaban mo't gam, lumaban ta yu gam, keta awan tima balindas. Eh, apandak mo't lang kasarita nga kunada nga sikha asapunong barangay. Aban mo pasar dengen di agiar aramid iti balay, kunada nga kunak. Hangkung nga trabaho tiya pasar deng te gararamid iti balay. Dakaiwa, tati isu trabaho yun sa. Kunak, kat, no dahil ta ti aramidan yo. Apan yo la, aramidan yo lang di report juta, apan yo i report ij Janhita. No kasu anda kami to sungbatan mi, tadang nga rud ya kat dimi. So hangkung nga ma balin apan pasar dengan dahil ta ta syakti ka apanti tau nu apangkus pasar dengen. Sudah yang dua nga balay tinaya aramidan nga impa pilit da. Uh, so kasi motin ti mangyari, kunak sa bar barangang nga, baka agbalin siguro unta kasi motin ti maramid, ngam diela ta, ijay apil mi nga no mabalin tulungan da kami ijay kuatama i recognize kumada ijay ancestral domain kaltis. Tadi nga rud kunanti kaka duwa nga, idi mutan nagpaylanda iti cancellation keta na, nalpas ti, di kanya mi pa ke ijdomin kat, almost three years, idinagpayda, iti cancellation. Hangkung nga mo taping ama, ma, apangkung nga mo taping acceptarun dagamin kat na, nalpas motin ti three years nun. Eh, di kuma apus so ijay, uh, tulungan da kami kuma.
Tapnamutay ti situation ti implementation ti projects ni Mister Chairman.
Yes, di punong barangay of Green Waters.
Good afternoon, manant ti. Koncern ko, siguro di question ko kat ni Konselor Yangut di makasungbat nya. Uh, pangke gamin dahil loti mi ijay, diba Janhey kami? Apinga dati lat owners nga nakakabil ijay mangala kami di Assessor's Office. Adati lat owner na, kasan nga di diket Janhey reservation mo't apa hanga Janhey nga rud ti makinbahi ijay?
Anya't ida kakabil nga lat owner?
Adati, uh, Martinez, adati, nagad, adungan nagnagan nga kuha, hamminga ma'amuh. Speculator siguro di ijay nga, no apinga isu dakat na allow di ij Assessor's Office nga agdeklar keta kami kat hangkaminga mabalin.
Uh, siguro ninang Kapitan na icheck teo dahil ta, uh, dapat nga maisar dengen ijay practice nga kunada nga double declaration. Ta dati dati mararamid etang, uh, for purpose of taxation, i allow da nga ideclar ti duwa nga tau, talu nga tau. ijay structure dati by sangadaga basta agbayad dati buis di guberno. But the last time that we had a meeting with the city assessor kunada, lilinisan dati tata ti records danga, they will not allow that to happen.
Santo, adati suspect ko pay nga, ada dita ti empleado dita Assessor's, Assessor's Office nga kaslapan panigan na pay di ijay nagnagan nga di ijay, so sabay kuma Konselor, ta tulungan da kami dita, tapno ma ikat kumamat ada ijay. Tapno da kami kumamat ati agbayad garut di kuha. Dahil balay lang ti baybayadan mi, ikat sa balay mati na nakadeclear nga lat owner. Ibag pay no Janhey kuma ati nakadeclear tamamatiyak pay, ngamno saba sa balay nga tau. Unfair mo't ada ijay Konselor?
Aras assured apo Kapitan na ipa investigate o dahil ta. Di kaya't kulang man nga ma'amuan kasan no di status ti project yung ito di guberno, pun-pundoan di guberno ti barang barangay kena, nukas pangarigan ada ti emergency repair, tati damag ko, uh, no hang kayo nga mangala iti permiso, capture enda di gi.
An simple, daka mimot ijay Green Water, dengun mimot piman ati baganti, uh, kuha uh, Janhey ta, agitud damut requirements nga kailangan nga iprocesso mi. Kat ma itud mi di ijay, ma allow kami mat nga aga repair iti balay mi. Ha, anda kami mat nga paritan, basta agprocesso kami kat mabiit mo't di ijay. Tapno anda kami nga tiliwan ta adagarut i guard house mi ijay Green Water. Isu nga kailangan nga aming kami, agprocess kami ti permit, ta handa mat nga paritan, uru iti project. I, i bagami kada ijay contractors nga ngala ti project nga, i process da isu rumi mo't kat awan mati problema kada kami ijay. Laang ta dati basit nga delay, dahil laang. Ngamno pangke ti balbalay, ada mat piman ti, ma itud da nga conditional permit. Awan ti problema mi ijay Green Water, no pangke ti house repair ta isu rumi mo't ijay tau mi nga agprocess kayo ti permit. Ta narigat mati matiltilo ma idar darom. Isu nga, isu mat piman ti aramidan mi ijay Green Water, adati dadakal nga balbalay ijayin nga maripreperin. Nakaala dati conditional permit dati GHMC. Ti problema nilaang di segregation dapat ma isegregate kumain nya. Di mat, isu nga dawdawatan, mi titulong yu manant, tada kayo mo ti tartarayan mi, no da problema mi. Kat salamat-salamat unay kada kayo. In behalf of the Green Water Village barangay, salamat unay. Thank you.
Di gi kuha, di gi diya da kalti kan kalti na. Uh, nugap apply kayo ti building permit. Nice issuean kayo ba? No dati pasa adyo takunan ni apo Kapitan kat, tinuro dan langen tiya pasad, kano ijay ayanda Happy Haloo nga da kalti na. Ta no dati kalti na, kentad kalti na kat obligado di guberno kumaga gitad ti building permit. Damagenda kayo man, nanyati situation tata.
Okay, na ibag nga malum kanya ti mananamin, uh, may sakman nga sumungbat ijay ta uh, pinadparas mi, pinadas mi ganinan, iti nag apply iti ij constituent kuha dati ng paras iti nag apply iti uh, building permit. Tiya gaplate building permit, masapul adati ka title nga atats mo. So tiya atats mi ijay kati nga rud ngam pati di gitipag precision dito kuha ni, ibag-bagad ati tinga adapay moti problema iti Janhey. Kung kunada di gitipag, ta adu moti pagnan nu magagnag, process keta building permit. So, may sa pay di nga ikukwada di nakali spendens, uh, di ijay ti problema isu nga andapay nga, i, andapay nga iprocesso. Santu dati man ti madamag ko Konselor Yangut, uh, komitie on lens, uh. Ada diya nalipatak pain di. Uh, damag. Nah, di iti problema nga rud ijay ya kat, di kunada nga may sa awan ti guidelines ijay kalti katis. Paylang dito ya opis iti proses, pagprocessan iti kuha, building permit. Deman aputi kaya't mi nga ma'amuan, no anya batik kasana di.
Uh, we will discuss this accordingly, Kapitan. Anya, kaya si bao kani ijay, uh, kini apo mayor, kasi iti idilas nga nagtutungtung kami kat ipagkaawat ko. Issuean da kayo iti building permits di giya dati kalti na kent valid nga kaltis na. Ya, ngam, nukas tagan ti situation then, uh, obligado tayo nga mang surut. Mang follow-up tapno, uh, di kaya't yu nga mangyaring ada ma isu nga, tada kayo mo't kaya't yu ti legal, kaya't yu ma building permitan, anya. So, uh, we will work on that, apo Kapitan.
Thank you.
My next question is, pay ni Kagawad Dudung? Mister Chairman, ni Kagawad Kahitan is raising his hands.
What is the purpose of the question? Is it directed to our invited guest or would you like another to? Would you like to direct it particularly to Kagawad Dudung?
Yes, uh, yes, uh, Mister Chairman, because I think it affects the greater portion of the barangay.
Can we allow that? May we call on Kagawad Emanuel to answer the question?
Sir, pardon sir.
Dengor, you are raising your hand, I think you, the problem on the issuance of building permits, uh, constituents?
Uh, yung sasagutin ko po sir, yung naunang question po sir, yung sa regarding sa projects.
Projects, sir.
Uh, pangke mat iti pinunduhan ti City Government, uh, adamutan na implement mi piman nga after nakapagpakadati Janhey, pati di pinunduhan ti barangay. No malagip ko di may sang na ka, nahinder nga kuha, maramid mi di, uh, survey ti kuha ti barangay kan city needs, uh, in relation di alias cadastral survey. Uh, no anyaman di ijay napalan IDED kat mayat kuma no ma, ma survey mat lang para ijay project di inarket. Uh, di nagsubli ti di ijay contractor nga ma survey kuma di ijay. Uh, na stop ti rangers, isu nga hanmi na ituloy.
So, nyati problema yu hangan atuloy ti survey?
Hangan atuloy di survey di ijay kalsada, pan di creek canal, ta na stop ti rangers.
So, hangan atuloy?
Answer. Answer.
Anya de gijay day nalang I D nga kalkalsada?
Ah, di nalang I D nga may sakat di mapan iti maridit ah san to di canal.
We will bring that to the attention of the mayor. So that, that will be addressed, kasi sayang mati puntunadikita.
Yeah, sige sir, salamat.
My next question is. Address to the Camp Jan Hey Devko. Ah, after the original contract was signed. Ah, may we know how many times the contract was revised? Or could you kindly brief us on what happened after the Mowa was inked? I understand it was revised several times. So that the other members of the city council will be ah brief accordingly. Because it appears that as we, we had the, the other party last session. It was the impression that you, everything, all the fault is on your side. My understanding is, ah, the other party is also to be faulted. Because it agreed to the revision of the Mowa several times. Resulting to redact, to rather reduction of the payment, ah, the lease rental and the reduction of the share of the city of Baguio. Could you kindly shed light on this please?
Ah, as soon as the lease contract was signed in nineteen ninety six. And C J H Devko took over the list premises. It discovered that ah, the, that B C D A cannot deliver the entire two hundred forty six hectares.
Two forty seven?
Two forty six or two forty seven hectares. Ah, apparently, a portion of the lease premises is being occupied either by squatters or by other government agencies. And therefore, the possession cannot be turned over to C J H Devko. So that situation persevered for, for quite some time, ano? Ah, and the B C D A was not able to deliver the environment compliance certificate. If you, if you can recall, an E C C is a, is a requisite for you to introduce any development inside Camp Jan Hey. So without it, you cannot introduce any, ah, any development inside it. Unfortunately, the E C C was only issued ah January of nineteen ninety eight. While the contract started in nineteen, in October of nineteen ninety six. So medyo ma, ma layu na ho yung tinakbo noong kontrata bago nakapag issue ng E C C. So bago po noong maisua ng E C C, walang magawang development yung C J H Devko sa loob ng ah Camp Jan Hey. So, ah, ang nangyari po nito, ah, in ah, the year two thousand. Finally nagkaroon nitong restructuring memorandum of agreement. Na kung saan, ang sinasabi po ay yung portion na hindi may deliver ng B C D A. Eh papalitan na lamang po ng ibang lupa. So, ang in short, ang nangyari parang swap po, ang nangyari doon sa ano na yon. So nakapirmahan di, ano na po yon, natuloy na. Pero bago pa noong, bago pa noong agreement na yon. Eh, sinasabi na ho ng C J H Devko sa B C D A. Na mahirap naman kung binabayaran namin si enyu yung renta. Na nakapalagay doon sa ilalim ng kontrata. Gayong hindi naman yu natutupad yung mga obligasyon nyo sa ilalim ng kontrata na yon. So kaya, doon na ho nakaroon na ho ng friksyon between the two parties. Dahil eto ang both party saying, ah, either hindi ko kasalanan kung bakit hindi ko matupad yung obligasyon. Or sinasabi na hindi ako magbabayad hanggang hindi mo matupad yung obligasyon mo. So, nag ano yon, nagpatuloy yu yung sitwasyon na yon. Ang kasamaan ho nito noong ah, the year two thousand three. Kasi noong year two thousand three lumabas po yung desisyon ng korte suprema. At ang sinasabi doon sa desisyon na yon. Na yung provision na nagbibigay ng preferential tax rate sa C J H Devko. Na five percent ay null and void. Dahil dapat ang nagbigay daw non, hindi executive branch ng gobyerno, kundi dapat kongreso. So since yung five percent ten eh nanggali lamang sa executive branch, yun daw po ay illegal. Ano ang naging epekto nito? Ang naging epekto po nito babaya, ang babayaran na buwis na ngayon ng C J H Devko. Instead na five percent, na nakapaloob doon sa original lease agreement. Naging back to doon sa ordinary or regular tax rate para sa mga corporations. Na umaabot po ng thirty two percent. So makikita ninyo yung malaking ah discrepancy. Na, na ang sabi, kapagka ikaw ay naging developer dyan at ikaw ang lesi namin, five percent. Eh ngayon, binideclar na illegal yon, null and void, kaya naging back to thirty two percent. So lahat yung ginawang plano ng, ng kumpanya para doon sa development inside the camp, inside the camp. Tumapo na ho yon, kasi ang basiso for making the developmental cost and computing the income. Eh ang babayaran mo lang tax eh dapat five percent. Eh ngayon nawala nga ho yon, binalik sa thirty two percent. Ang masama pa ho nun, eto na ngayon ang B I R, kinig, ang sabi ng B I R. Since null and void, yung pagbibigay si enyu ng five percent. Kukulekthay namin retroactive yan. Simula pa noong nagsimula yung kontrata nyo in nineteen ninety six. So, doon talaga nagkaruna ng malaking problema. Dahil paano pa maipagpapatuloy ng C J H Devko? Yung kanyang programa sa loob ng kampo. Kung yung representation at guarantees na ibinigay ng B C D A. Ay hindi na, na matutupad o wala na by reason of a supreme court decision. So doon, as sinasabi ng C J H Devko, magrenegotiate tayo sa ating mga, sa babayaran naming renta. Dahil yung mga representation mo at warranties, eh hindi naman natutupad. So nagkaroon pa ho ng iba, ilang, ano pa ho, armowa, ah, ano revised memorandum of agreement. Hindi ko na maalala kung ano yung mga, mga taon na yon, ano? Ang naalala ko lang po yung pinakahuli, yung two thousand eight. Okay, noong two thousand eight, ganito na ho ang naging usapan. At ito po ay nakapail, naka, isang kasulatan ho, ang pinirmahan ng C J H Devko at ng B C D A. Ang naging kasul, ang naging agreemento ng both party sa ito. Ah, tatanggapin ng C J H Devko. Na meron siyang bak, utang na back rental sa, sa B C D, sa lagan na about two point four billion pesos. Kung ipatutupad ng B C D A, yung tinatawag na one stop action center. Itong one stop action center neto, ito yung magpo, magpo-proseso ng lahat ng permits at clearances na kailangan ng C J H Devko para doon sa development na gagawin nila sa loob ng Camp Jan Hey. At yamga permits na yan, ayon doon sa, sa agreement, ibibigay sa C J H Devko within thirty days from submission of the documents. So maliwanago, yak knowledge na merong two point four back rentals ang C J H Devko to B C D A provided. Magtatayo ng maayos at gumaganang one stop action center ang B C D A. At kasama din po dyan sa, sa agreement na yan, yon two thousand eight. Meron po mga properties na ibinayad po ang ah, C J H Devko sa B C D A. Na nagkakahalaga po ng, hindi ko maalala, maalala na ho yung exactong amount. Pero daang, daang milyon peso po ang halaga noong ibinayad ng C J H Devko sa B C D A. Ah, bilang dashon and pago. Okay, so akala ng, ng kumpanya maayos na ho yon. Dahil meron na ang finally clear agreement between the parties. Eh, ang nagpatuloy yung problema dahil yung one stop action center hindi po gumagana. Hindi po naibibigay noong one stop action center yung lahat ng mga permits at clearances na kailangan ng C J H Devko. So anong nangyari ho, yun ho ang naging rason kung bakit nagkaroon nitong arbitration case. Noong makita ng C J H Devko na hindi naman tinutupad ng B C D A, yung agreement na yon. Eh, inavail nyo na yung arbitration provision doon sa lease contract. Na kung ang part, ang party sa hindi po magkakasundo. They can submit their dispute or controversy in arbitration. So yun ang, yun ang ininvoked ng C J H Devko at nagfile for arbitration. So ngayon, ah, natapos yung arbitration na process na yon. At ito na nga po yung desisyon noong arbitration tribunal.
Yun pong, you mentioned about the restructuring or the, the restructured Mowa, ano? Ah, to make the long story short, na reduce po ano, yung lease sa Camp Jan Hey, dun sa lease premises.
Hindi po siya na reduce, nagkaroon, nagkaroon lang po ng rescheduling noong payment. Yun po ang, ang ah, ang naging sumatotal ho noong mga agreements entered into by the parties.
Ang pagkaintindi ko po, turni obara is kuane, ah, as a result of the revision of the original memorandum of agreement. Ah, nabawasan po yung binabayaran na lease sa B C D A, yun po ang pagkaintindi ko doon.
Eh, hindi po, hindi po yun ho. Ang nangyari lamang po eh nareschedule, nagkaroon ng schedule of payment. Na nagagree po yung party so kung paano babayaran yung mga back rental so na, napakakautang na C J H Devko then sa B C D A.
Ah, yun pong ginamit yung term rescheduling is a very technical term. Para maintindian ng lahat, in layman's term, how would you explain in the simplest term? Kung ibig sabihin yung rescheduling ng bayad ng lease?
Okay, ganito po yan. Kulwari po, ang ating, ang ating kasunduan ay babayaran ko ang aking lease con, ang aking rent. Na nakakalaga ko ng one hundred fifty million kada taon. Yun ho ang nakalagay sa kontrata. Ngayon, hindi po nagbayad ang C J H Devko noong lease ah rental na yon dahil nga sa hindi tumupad yung kabilang panig. So sa Madrid sabi, meron na ngayong one hundred fifty million na nakalutang na hindi pa nababayaran. Okay, pumunta ngayon tayo sa susunod na taon. Hindi pa rin, ayaw pa, hindi pa rin nagbayad ng C J H Devko dahil sa hindi pa rin tinutupad ng B C D A, yung kanyang obligasyon. So sa Madrid sabi, meron na ngayon three hundred million, kulwari, na unpaid back rentals. Okay, sa ikat noong taon, nagkausap yun ta, yung galawang parties. Oh sige, ganito na lang, since meron ka pang three hundred million na hindi nababayaran. Bayaran mo na lang ito ng ganito, magagree tayo na schedule. Ah, pagkapirma ng kontrata, bayaran mo fifty million. Tapos yung balanse na two hundred fifty million, bayaran mo sa akin every six months. Kulwari lamang po, kasi hindi ko na maalala yung exactong napagagreean eh. Yun ho yung tinatawag na rescheduling of payment.
Ah, the matter on the one stop shop, ah, B C D claims that it was able to, to put in place the so-called one stop shop in Camp Jan Hey. Ah, are you disputing the statement that they were able to successfully put that up?
Ay hindi na ho namin kailangan po i dispute. Dahil yung arbitration tribunal decision ho, eh categorically inaddress po yang, yang, yang issue na yan. Kasi yan po yung depensa na ni raiseo ng B C D A. Na sabi nila, na itayo daw nila yung, yung one stop action center. Pero maliwanago doon sa desisyon ng arbitration tribunal. Na kaya hindi na maaring kolekthay ng B C D A. Yung halagan three point three billion pesos na sinasabi nilang back rentals na utang ng C J H Devko. Ay dahil hindi po nila tinupad ang obligasyon nila sa ilalim ng lease contract. At isa dyan po ay yung hindi po pagtatag ng gumagana na one stop action center. Sumi, categorical finding na po ang arbitration tribunal dyan. Na hindi po nakapagtayo ang B C D A noong one stop action center na yon, as envisioned by the parties.
Ah, the last hearing, you were present together with our former colleague, uh, councilor Bang Man Dapat?
Yes, sir.
Unfortunately, you were not able to, ah, say your piece, no? Before lack of material time. Ano po ang masasabi nyo about yung hamon po ng ah president and chief executive officer ng B C D A? Na isaliwalat nyo po ilabas yung book of account at inyu pong ipa-subject to audit. Yun po, yun po yung last na statement nya, kung hindi ako nagkamali. Hinamon po kayo pero hindi kayo nakapagrespond at tayo.
Kung po yon eh, alam po nyo napakarani po. Simula po natin sa simula't simula. Ang inyu pong kagala, ang ating pong kagalanggalang na konsial yangot. Sinabi mo na nga na, let us really define the parameters of the discussion this afternoon. Para nang sa kanun, walang magre-grandstanding. Eh grandstanding na po yun, gusto ko na nga punto may yun sana. Para magraise ng point to porter, hindi naman ho ako member ng august body. Dahil lumabas na po siya doon sa topic natin eh. Hindi na po yun topic natin sa agenda, ang dapat discussion. Kundi para sirahan lang yung Devko, lalong lalo na po yung pagkatao ni Mister Sobrepenya. Yun po mapakalinaw po yun, na gusto lang nilang sirahin yung pagkatao ni Mister Sobrepenya. Unang unang na lang, sinabi nya. Yung absence ni Mister Sobrepenya dito ngayon is a sign of disrespect for this august body. Hindi po tutuyon. Dahil sa lahat po ng imbitasyon ninyo, nandidito po si Mister Sobrepenya, ready po kami. At kayo na rin po magpapa, magpapatatag nito na, na cancel po yung meeting dahilan sa sila ang hindi humarap. Tinanong na nga po ninyo sa kanila, kailan ba kayo pwede? Para nang sa kanun, ireschedule natin, kung kailan kayo pwede. Eh hindi naman ho sila nagkuat, tapos ang lakas lakas ng loob nila na magsasabi na disrespect yung absence si Mister Sobrepenya. Kaya't na ho hindi nakarting si Mister Sobrepenya dahilan nga sa hearing noon sa Court of Appeals. Ong going po yung hearing nun, noong, yung petition po na pending before the Court of Appeals tungkol dito sa problema. Kami namang po ang kanyang nataasan na magpakita rito, hindi ho pagwa walang respeto sa inyu po yon. Dahilan sa imbitasyon po ninyo, kaya kami naririto, kami kaya nagpunta rito. At lahat po noong mga imbitasyon ninyo, handa po kami humarap. Hindi ho kami napapakita ng wala respeto po sa inyu. Respetado po naming kayo at gusto rin naming marinig ninyo. Kung ano po yung aming ah, istorya dito sa problema ng ito. Kaya po yung hamon nya na, ay challenge this august body to use its power. To compel the production of the books of accounts of Devko. Para makita ninyo na ang kinita ni Mister Sobrepenya at ang Devko na more than six billion pesos na ibinulsa nila. Yun po yung sinabi nya eh, eh napaka sama namang po noong kanyang sampu nya kinuay six billion. At sinabi na nga po ng ating kagalanggalang na alcalde, si Mayor Dumogan, we have no power to do that. Hindi namang po kami governmental organization na pwedeng isupin na yung mga books of accounts. Bidat asit me po, lahat po ng mga sinasabi nila tungkol dyan sa mga income generated, nandidito po sa desisyon. Lahat po yan, nandun nilabas po lahat dyan, nandudun po. Kagaya ng sabi ni Attorney Obara, much that we wanted to furnish you with a copy of the two hundred and seventy four pages. We have to ask the permission of the other party and the arbitral tribunal. Bago po kami makapagkuwan, dahil eto eh parang confidential pa, ah, at this point in time. Pero kung naglalabas po sila na mga kataga o mga pahayag. Na parang iniwasan namang po yung tunay na nangyari. Kasi kagaya nga na sabi ng ating kagalanggalang na Mayor Dumogan eh, nandyan naman sa desisyon nya eh. Lahat ng pinagsasabi ninyo, ang bakit hindi na natuloy yung bayad? Kasi po, kagaya noong one stop action center, nandud, nandito po. Yung Camp Jan Hey Development Corporation has the right to suspend payment. Hindi ho, talaga hindi kami nagbabayad, hindi. We have the right to suspend payment if they fail to come up with a one stop action center that is operational. Meron po, one stop action center, meron sila opisino doon. Pero they are mandated to deliver the permits and clearances within a thirty day period. Yun pong agreement, failing in which we have the right to suspend the payment. Kaya sinasabi po nila na hindi kayo may nagbayad daw kahit singko. Eh, meron po, as a matter of fact po, makikita nyo, one million four hundred twenty one. Ah, one billion four hundred twenty one million peso ang naybayad po ng Devko. Etto po, kung tutuusin po ninyo no, twenty percent lang po noong developable area ang naydeliver nila sa amin eh. Kaya kung tutuusin mo po, yung one hundred, ah, one billion four hundred twenty one million is more than what we are supposed to pay them. Kasi yun pong halagang yon, it goes for the entire developable area, hindi namang po nila naydeliver yon. At dito po, maday pa ho hindi na nai-list na property. Doon po kayo kikita. Dun po kayo kikita, kung sakaling the city will take over, eventually take over ownership o pa Camp Janay. Dun po ninyo pwedeng ilis ulit 'yung property na yun. At tuloy-tuloy namang po 'yan, chains of management lang eh. Kung ano po 'yung binabayaran ng mga locators doon, sa Devko ngayon, babayad nila yun monthly dues sa city government. Or kung sino 'yung inyong aataasan o kung sino 'yung mananalo sa bidding na magdi-develop ng Camp Janay. So yun po 'yung, ah, madalas po na sinasabi nila, paninira lang po, eh samantalang 'yung mga issues po na sinabi na nila dun, eh, nandito po sa decision. Ang sabi nga eh, we are not unmindful, sabi po ng tribunal. Na 'yung tinagal ng developer diyan, 'yung Camp Janay Development Corporation eh parang lalabas na hindi nagbayad ng utang. Hindi, dahil 'yung na-cut short, 'yung lease, lahat ng limbawang improvements na na-develop diyan, eventually pupunta rin sa BCDA yun. Tapos, the city has the right to stake its claim over the property. Yun po yun, ngayon sabi, eh, pa'no 'yung kinita nila during the period of time? Sabi po dun, 'yung 1.421 billion pesos should bear interest, sabi po ng PDRCI. 'Yung interest na yun dapat bayaran na BCDA, pero 'yung kinita ng Devko during the stay will act as the interest payment. So hindi na maglalabas 'yung BCDA na pera, kundi 'yung kinita po ng Devko, yun po ang interest ng pera. Nandidito po lahat sa decision yun eh, eventually you will get to know po 'yung real story diyan. Hindi namang po 'yung sinasabi nila na, while Mister Sobrepena is playing golf, dining and drinking, may namamatay dun sa, um, dump site, tatlong bata namatay, sabi ni Vice Mayor Pienza, malika. Six ang namatay, hindi tatlo. At sila namatay dahil sa landslide, hindi nanduduon sa, ah, dump area na parang pinapalabas yun. Hindi namang po ganun, nasasabi nila na, syempre, kami nakapagbigay na kami ng 245 million pesos na tulong sa inyo. Eh ano 'yung kinita-kita na limpak-limpaki binulsa nila, imbes na tulungan namang sa namin, saan ba nila kinuha 'yung pinambayad sa inyo kundi sa amin? Eh, yun ang tulong namin sa City of Baguio, saan sila kukuha na ibabayad na 245, galing sa Devko? Eh, mukhang malipoy yata 'yung mga ganun kataga, kaya yun pong sabi nyo, katanong ang po nyo kagalang-galang na Leandro Yangot. Eh, hindi namang po, Junior po, Junior, eh, hindi namang po yung, eh, kagaya na sabi ni Mayor Dumogan eh, it is beyond the power. Besides, that has already been resolved. Ah, that has already been resolved by the Philippine Dispute Resolution Center. Lahat po ng kinita ng Devko, nandudun po, dahil sina Lins, pinalabas po lahat ng mga papeles namin dun. Lahat ng mga books of accounts lumabas, nandudun po. So nandito na, natapos na po yun, na-resolve na po. At hindi namang po tutuoy, sinasabi niya na kumita kami ng 6 billion. Hindi ko alam po sa sampu nila pinulot yun, para lang pasamain si Mister Sobrepena dahil ibinulsa raw ni Mister Sobrepena yun.
Ah, meron pang follow-up, Mr. Chairman. Ah, may magusto ko ang tanungin dito, ngunit ayaw kong maging parang isang parrot na ulitin ko 'yung sinabi ng mga kasama natin sa konsyo. You're a true blue, Baguio boy, Attorney Man dapat. I'd like to know, anong, ano pong ang sitwasyon ngayon no' mga labor force natin? Lalo 'yung mga taga-Baguio, who stand to lose their employment in case BCDA will take over? Meron ba tayong plano, meron tong binabalak na gawin para po bigyan ng tamang pansin o ukol 'yung mga this, this, ah, lowly employees who stand to lose their jobs if in case BCDA will take over? Ano pong mga plano natin na, ah, gawin para sa mga kababayan natin na nandyan po sa Janay?
Alam po ninyo, yung, sa totoo lang, ang employees po ng Devko, kulang-kulang po na 50 na lang po, no? Mga 15 na lang po 'yan. Yung mga mawawalan po ng trabaho, kagaya ng mga security guards, 'yung mga empleyado sa hotel, 'yung mga empleyado ng mga locators, mahigit 4,000 po yun, nandudun po lahat diyan. Yun ang mawawalan ng trabaho. Kung ipagpipilitan po nila na kunin, kagaya po ng sabi ng ating konsial na si Konsial Karinyo, that the lesi cannot go or has no better right than the, ah, the sublessi has no better right than the lesi. The river cannot flow higher than the stream, sabi nga niya eh. Yun nga po ang very issue pending before the Court of Appeals. They have a vested right and no less than the chief justice himself, former chief justice himself, Artemio Panganiaban, came up with a publication that the decision of the Philippine Dispute Resolution Center resolved the problem between BCDA and Devko, but the decision was silent on the rights of the third parties. The sublessors, the buyers of units inside Camp Janay, their investment should not go down to the waste. They were never given that they in court and therefore their rights should be respected. Yun po ang binitawan na salita ng ating dating kataas-tasang, ng kataas-tasang huuman at siya po ang presiding justice, si Artemio Panganiaban. Yung side po nam, 'yung sinasabi po namin, yun ang sinabi niya. So hindi po namin pinangungunahan ang decision po ng Court of Appeals, pero yun po ang dahilan kung bakit kami umakyat dun. Dahilan po sa hinihiling po namin dito sa lower court na kung pwede sana, i-resolve na yun. Dahil po 'yung decision, eh hindi namang po involve 'yung mga third parties. Sa amin lang namang po 'yung dalawa no' ah, kuwan 'yan eh, ng BCDA. Pero na maglabas po ng notice of, notice to vacate, 'yung ating clerk of court, sabi naman na dun eh, to Camp Janay Development Corporation and all persons claiming rights under them. Samo kinuha yun, all persons claiming rights under them. So we requested the court to rule on the matter, hindi po inactionan. One week before the due date, may, ah, that was on, ah, May 20, ah, June 20, ah, May 20. And naglip pa po sila 'yung kagalang-galang na hugom ng one week, eh di paano po ang marire-solve yun? Wala ho kayo magawa kundi umakyat sa Court of Appeals. Kaya mabuti na lang po, nag-issue naman ng temporary restraining order 'yung Court of Appeals. Hindi ho namin pinangungunahan 'yung decision, pero yun pong ni-race namin dun, unang-unang, ano ang karapatan ng mga locators? Yung mga naging best in good faith, anong karapatan nila? Tapos, pangalawa, yun bang partial execution ng decision, pwede ba yun? Bakit ka, Camp Janay Development Corporation, saka ka na na 'yung babayaran, pwede ba yun? Sa aming pananaw, hindi ata pwede yun. Ang amin namang dito, syempre, 'yung decision is return the 1.421 billion pesos and vacate. Dalawa lang namang yun eh, hindi naman sinabing, vacate and then you'll be paid. Hindi. So syempre, 'yung amin dun, dapat sabay yan. Ngayon sabi nila, bayad na kayo eh, nasan na 'yung bayad? Nandudun na sa landbank, eh nasan na 'yung ibi-release ninyo, kung nasa landbank na pala, malino namang 'yung rules of court. You have to pay us in cash, manager's check, or, um, cashier's check, or any payment acceptable to us. Eh nasan 'yung bayad mo? Nandun na ka-deposit under scroll, pay to the account of the Regional Trial Court of Baguio, which the Regional Trial Court said, it's now under the control. Pero tanong namin, sigurado ba kayo marire-release yan? Bakit di nyo release? Eh, subject to Kowa approval pa pala. Kaya ang tanong po ni Justice, tikam, lumabas po sa jari yun. Eh pa'no kung hindi sidak Justice tiham? Sabi niya, pa'no kung dinis approve ng Kowa? And you're in a hurry to evict Devko from the premises, but you're not paid. Yun ang katanungan, hindi ho masagot. So 'yung amin lang namang po diyan, yun ang tinatanong namin sa court. We are not preempting, we are not trying to violate this judici rule, but of course, you have the right to know. And this is a record which the people of Baguio should know, kung ano nangyari. Kasi ang pinapalabas po diyan, napakasama po ni Sobrepena eh, napakasama ng Camp Janay Development Corporation. Hindi po namang ganun, huwag namang po sana ganun dahil may tinatawag po sila, hindi namang sinasabi. Kaya nga, sabi nga ni Mister Sobrepena, sa Monday sana, kung po pwede, imbitahan ninyo siya at makakarating siya dito sa Baguio, pero sabi naman ni Vice Mayor Rabilu kanina na kinansil pala ninyo 'yung meeting nyo sa Monday. So yun po lang namang masasabi namin, pansamantala.
Go ahead to the other speaker. The Honorable Datin is recognized for the first round.
Okay, ah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ah, first, I'd like to, ah, address this matter to our barangay captains from the 13 barangays. Ah, for me, I think the solution to all of this is the total segregation of the barangay. Otherwise, we keep on hearing the same thing and we cannot honestly to the barangays, we cannot give complete solution because there are two bodies who are supposed to give the decision, BCDA and the city government of Baguio. But once this is totally segregated to the barangay, then totally also the city government can come in and give its decision. So, ah, on my part, I will do my best together with the other councilors to come up with a full segregation of the barangays so that the problems coming up now from many, many of them can be resolved. Ah, I can see eh, medyo nakak, ah, makakasinu duma, we cannot really do anything at this point in time because sabi nga ni, ah, barangay captain na June Bakungan, parang duwati, ah, government, one from the BCDA, one from the city government of Baguio, so it's really a, ah, a difficult situation unless there is full segregation. Ah, on the part also of, ah, Devko, ah, it's good to know that, ah, the case is now in the Court of Appeals, ready for decision and as, ah, Mayor Dumogan has said, most of those that are being asked are actually in the arbitration decision. But, of course, we have to bring out this matter. Devko was the one who asked for this, ah, matter, that this matter be resolved in the arbitration proceeding, isn't it?
Yes.
So, ah, it was your understanding at that time that whatever decision of the arbitration panel must be respected by both parties, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Now, ah, the arbitration panel already came up with decision answering most of the questions that we have been asking, ah, earlier. But, the truth is, Devko appealed the decision of the arbitration panel.
No.
Why, why did you appeal if you are not satisfied with the decision and when you are supposed to accept the decision of the arbitration panel?
With all your respect, Your Honor, we did not appeal. We did not appeal. All we sought for before the Court of Appeals is whether or not the notice to vacate issued to us, while they should be complied with according to the sheriff, but they have not complied with the notice to pay given to them. So, all we are asking is, okay, no less than the judge herself said, kaliwaan, tapos na yan, are you willing to pay? Ngayon na lang po, ibigay nila 'yung pera ngayon and we will assure you, we will vacate Janay immediately as soon as they refund the money. Now, um, no investor in his right mind, Your Honor, ah, will honor a decision which will be partially implemented, vacate, then we pay you when, we don't know when. That's not the decision. The decision says refund the money and vacate. Now, they refund the money, give us the money right now and assure us I'm standing here and on my honor. On all the honors of the people involved in the development of Camp Janay, we will peaceful vacate. We did not appeal the decision. We respected the decision. That's why we want the decision to be interpreted because it has been subjected to different interpretations. No less than the judge herself said, the decision is clear, needs no further interpretation because they are also precluded from interpreting the decision of the Philippine Dispute Resolution Center. We did not appeal, Your Honor, ah, with all your respect.
Do you agree with me that that is just one of the issue? Of course, from what we read in the newspaper, we have no complete record of the case. That is just one issue and the more important issue is the condition of the, ah, locators and the, ah, lesis of Camp Janay. I think they're saying that the reason why you appeal this, you will be subjected to many court cases by the lesis of Camp Janay.
No.
If the decision will be implemented, and that was indeed the decision of the Regional Trial Court.
Who said that, Your Honor? From whom did you hear that?
That was in the newspaper, that's the reason why I'm asking you this question.
Your Honor?
In the newspaper, Attorney.
In the newspaper? No. Of course, they are free to sue, they are free to sue. But the people who come to us, we request them to go to the BCDA also. We explain our side and then request them to go to the BCDA. Get the side of BCDA after you have heard their side. Many of them have signed up with us to file as intervenors in the Court of Appeals, Your Honor. Now, it's not that because we went to court, we went to the Court of Appeals that they are precluded from filing a case against us. No, that is not a condition prerequisite, Your Honor, to their filing a case against us because at this point in time, it is premature. It is premature, Your Honor, they cannot file a case. You are a lawyer, I am a lawyer. We know that, that they cannot file a case in the meantime because the, the matter has not been resolved with finality. So, we are even fighting for the rights of the, ah, locators, Your Honor, because we so believe that they invested their money in good faith. They entered into a contract while the contract between BCDA and Devko was in full percent effect. As a matter of fact, Your Honor, you know, it's funny because sometimes the, ah, the question crop up earlier. Is it 25 or 50 years? And then BCDA says, oh, that's only 25? You know, Attorney Obara made mention of the Dasyun and Pago. We have given them as payment of the rentals, part of the rental payments, 10 units at the Manor Hotel, 16 units at the Forest Labs, 5 units at the Lagavins, at the Former Voice of America, and they have 10 shares in the golf club. In the Dasyun and Pago, it's very clear. As, ah, the mayor had said earlier, you should respect the decision of your predecessors because in the Dasyun and Pago, it's clearly stated there up to the year 2046 and BCDA signed. It's there, that was presented in evidence before the Philippine Dispute Resolution Center. So they cannot, so, they cannot claim that they don't know. Where in the world did they say that they do not know that the lease is up to the year 2046? Because the, the original lease contract, Your Honors, is 25 years, as Attorney Obara said, renewable at the option of the lesi.
Anyway, ah, from to the representative of Mister Sobrepena, we hope that the decision will come up, ah, come out soon so that, that Baguio City can also move on because for Baguio City, our only interest here is the interest of Baguio. Ah, I'd like also to know, ah, from the representative of Camp Janay Devko, who is the owner of Manor Hotel, Forest Labs, 'yung, ah, Camp Janay Golf Club Convention Center? Is this not owned by Mister Sobrepena?
No, 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 sir. It is owned by a corporation.
Ah, managed by Sobrepena?
Separate and distinct, although they form part of the management, Your Honor, but it is form, it is being managed by the Club Leisure Hotel, Club Leisure, um, Corporation. They, that is as far as the Manor and the Forest Labs is concerned. And then the Camp Janay Golf Course is owned by the Camp Janay Golf Club Incorporated, Your Honor.
Because the impression that we are getting is, ah, these are companies owned and controlled by Mister Sobrepena and, ah, the reason why he does not want to vacate the places, anyway, he owns the same places, Manor Hotel, Forest Labs. So parang mas kinamay decision, nandun pa rin siya. Ganoon po ba yon?
Ah, hindi po tutuoyon. Hindi po tutuoyon. At ito po ang katotohanan. Okay, isa-isainu natin para humaliwanag. Sabi, unahin na muna natin yung sa Manor at saka Forest Lodge. Okay, yun hong mga kwarto dun, ibinenta na po yan sa mga third parties. Binili na po yan ang third parties. Kaya pag tinunong niyo, sino ba ang may-ari ng Manor? Ay, wala pong nagmamay-ari niya na isang tao lamang. Ang nagmamay-ari po nila ay yung mga bumili ng mga units dun. Ngayon, ino-operate ngayon, nung binili nila yung units ngayon, they entered into a lease contract with a company. Anong gagawin itong company nito? Ito ang magmamanager noong kanilang mga units. Kaya nabuo ngayon bilang isang hotel po yan. Pero maliwanag na yung pag-aari nung mga individual units ay nandun po sa mga bumili po niyan. Hindi po kay Mr. Sobrepena po yang buong Manor o ang Forest Lodge, o kahit sabihin niyo na yung golf course.
Kaya yun naman sa golf po- Ako kasi, parang, parang, siyempre may confusion din tayo dito, dahil, uh, totoo nga na may decision sa arbitration na ejected ng Camp Janhe DEBCO, but in effect, sila rin ang nagmamanager ng Manor Hotel. So, ano-anong ejectment ejectment, yun ang sinasabi lang.
Ah, eh, hindi, hindi po ganun huwag yung sitwasyon. Kagaya rin ho, dyan sa golf, yung golf course, o no? Okay, yan ho, merong mga ibinentang membership, yung club shares, ang tawag po niyan. So, yung bumili mong club share, siya po ay isa sa mga may-ari noong golf club. Ganun po ang, ang arrangement pa yan. Hindi po na si Mr. Sobrepena o ang CJH DEBCO ang may-ari ng buong, uh, golf club po. Kasang may-ari po niya, kung sino ang bumili noong golf shares. Ngayon, yung pagmamanager po nung golf club, eh, nag-enter into po by the agreement of all the owners therein, nagkarunod sila ng butohan, ipinamanager po nila sa isang entity. Yun lang po yun nagmamanager nung golf club po. Pero hindi ibig sabihin siya ang may-ari nung golf club.
Ang sitwasyon po pala dito sa explanation niyo, o, alis ba ang DEBCO, pero sa tutusin, wala rin napalaang BCDI dahil, uh, ang naiwan ng mga facilities, Manor Hotel, Forest Lodge, uh, Golf Course, yung Convention Center, ah, pag-aari rin ng ibang tao. So, ano pong nangyari sa BCDI dito? Hindi po ba, uh, parang, uh, sabi na natin kalokohan ang nangyari dito?
Yan, hindi po. Kasi, andun nga po sa original lease agreement namin, na, si, eto si BCDI, ipararenta niya itong si, uh, Camp Janhe, at ino-authorize niya ang CJH DEBCO na mag-introduce ng developments. At yang mga developments na yan, yan ay nakikita niyong Manor, yan ay Forest Lodge, yan ay yung mga ibang mga cottages na nakalagay po idon. Ang nagsabi po nung kondisyon na yan, BCDI po. Kasi maliwanag na pagka-wala nito mga developments na'to, wala naman hong pupunta doon sa Camp Janhe para tangkilikin po ito.
Ang tinitingnan po kasi natin dito, okay, alis po kayo malinis, nabayaran na po kayo ng one point two. Napunta po sa management group kung sino man po yang Manor Hotel. So, uh, after you will leave Camp Janhe, eventually, wala rin pong mapapalaang Baguio City, dahil itong mga prime properties na ito, mga, uh, possible, uh, investment sites ng mga bagong, uh, investor, wala na po dahil nakolekta na po ng Camp Janhe DEBCO. So, wala na po makukolekta ang Baguio, kasi, ganun na po kasi, nasabi niyo, sandali lang. Nasabi mo kanina, na karamihan naman dun, nakolekta na ng Camp Janhe DEBCO. Ang magiging share na lamang ng city dun, yung hindi pa nakukolekta, eh, karamihan naman, nakolekta na. So, eh, ano pang mapapala ng Baguio ngayon dito? So, hindi po ba kailangan po tayo magkaroon ng, uh, pag-iisip-isip din dito sa interes po ng Baguio? Hindi lamang po interes ng ilang tao?
Opo, yun hong kanina po ano, yung kanina hong sinabi ko na wala na po kayong makukolekta, ay patungkuluyon sa mga units o sa mga developments na ibinenta na po sa third parties na fully paid. Okay? Now, dun ba sa buong eighteen hectares na developable footprint dun sa loob ng Camp Janhe? Lahat po ba yan ay nibenta na ng CJH DEBCO? Ang sagot po, hindi. So, yung hindi pa ho na portion na, nabenta ng CJH DEBCO sa loob ng Camp Janhe, yun ho ang pwede nyong i-develop, o pwede niyo rin hong ibenta, o pwede niyo rin hong i-lease. Eh, ilan bang pinag-uusapan natin, Attorney Obara, na hectares? Eh, out of the eighteen hectares, so, one-third pa lang ho eh, ang nadedevelop ng CJH DEBCO. So maliwanag na about, uh, twelve hectares, twelve hectares pa ho, out of the eighteen developable footprint po ha, ang pwede pa ho na i-develop, ipalis, ibenta ng City of Baguio once it assumes ownership of the, of Camp Janhe. Ngayon, puntahan natin, eh, Attorney Obara, papaano naman yung nadepvelop niyo na at nakuhanin niyo na yung, uh, bayad na konserasyon? Wala na bang papasok na income sa City Government? Meron pa po. At yun yung tinatawag na association juice.
Magdudunan po yan?
Oh, pwede niyong kolektahin mo yan?
Sinbilyas po ba yon, o, aabot din ng tausan? Aabot po ba ng milyon yon?
Millions po, millions po yon. Millions po yon.
So, wala po sa one point two billion yon, hindi na po kami aabot ng ganon?
Ah, ang, yung one point four po yon ha, one point four to one billion, yun ho yung renta'y binayad namin simula pa nung nineteen ninety-six. So, ibig sabihin, hindi ibig, uh, ang gusto ko lang iemphasize is this, hindi ho yung entire eighteen hectares na ibenta ng CJH DEBCO to third parties. Hindi po. Out of the, out of the eighteen hectares, more or less about mga six hectares po. And then dyan sa six hectares na yan, hindi naman lahat ho fully paid eh. Meron pa hong hindi fully paid ho dyan. Dun sa fully paid ang sinasabi ngaw namin, pakirispeto naman ho yung kontrata nila, kasi fully paid po sila.
Yun ho ang sinasabi yon. Mahirap kong indindihin yung pagrispeto ng kontrata dahil yung nga po sinabi ng decision dun sa, even po dun sa arbitration, even po dun sa rate of execution na i-turnover po niyo ang lahat ng improvements. So, uh, of course, nagappeal na po kayo, nandun na po tayo, so iniintay nga po natin yung decision. Para, siguro, sa amin din sa Baguio, sabi ko nga, we can also move on, alam namin yung gagawin namin, kaya pinag-iisip-isipan ko lang, parang konting-konti na lang natira, kumbaga, uh, crumbs na lang natira sa Baguio, na sinakuha na ng DEBCO.
Oh, yun ho yung gusto naman namin hong klaruhin, hindi po. Hindi po siya crumbs, hindi po siya parang wala lang natira. Malaki po ang potensyal na iiwanan, at malaki po yung prop, yung pwede pang i-develop na, na property dunu sa loob, na iiwanan ho lang CJH DEBCO. At yam po ay inyong marerealize once you take ownership of it. Dun yun lang ho makikita na, kasi pinag-usapan pa lang natin yung eighteen hectares developable footprint. Pero yung entire lease area nung lease property ho, eh, two hundred forty-seven hectares. Hindi ho to eighteen hectares lang, two hundred forty-seven hectares. But, the, but dun sa aming master development plan na, na ginawa ng BCDI, we can only develop eighteen hectares. Oho. And then out of that eighteen hectares, about six hectares pa lang ho ang nadepvelop. So, ibig sabihin, about twelve hectares pa yung open for development, open for lease, open for selling, na mapupunta na ho sa City Government of Baguio once they assume ownership of it.
Uh, ang sinasabi po ba natin dito ay, uh, pag-alis po ng DEBCO, presyo may po na nabayaran na po kayo ng one point four billion? Wala na po kayong kikitain starting that time on hanggang twenty forty-six?
Ah, CJH DEBCO, wala na ho, kasi umalis na ho kami eh.
Eh, yung mga Manor Hotel, yung sa, yung mga-
Magiging decision, magiging decision po yan nung mga owners ho. Dun sa, sa kunwari, sa majority nung, kung, nung decision, nung mga unit owners dun, ang masusunod. Kung gusto nilang ipamanager yung property kunwari sa City Government of Baguio, kunwari lamang ho. O sa isang subsidy na i-create to the City Government of Baguio, yun ang decision nung majority members nung, ng nagme-may-ari nung mga units sa Manor, eh, yun ang matutu- matasusunod po. Ganun ang magiging, uh, ano, uh, magiging patakara nung nasusunod din para kumalaman, kung sino po ang magmamanager ng Manor, Forest Lodge, o kahit unong golf club.
Okay, uh, salamat po, uh, sana po yun talagang lumabas na po yung decision, para po lahat po tayo makapag-move on, salamat po.
Okay. May we recognize the Honorable Kusalan, and then the Honorable Yaron to end the first round?
Haha, just the first round. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this will not take long. Uh, good afternoon, Attorneys Obara and Attorney Mandapat, and to our punong barangays who are still here. I just want to pursue, uh, that question I posed before Attorney Casanova. Um, probably I'll start by asking you, uh, the DEBCO. In the past, you've been there for nineteen years already, I understand. So, in the past, uh, have you seen the roles of the local governments, particularly the barangays, in, in your operations? Have you seen them active, or have you, have you availed of their services?
Um, may we be clarified on what exactly would you want to know, Consular Kusalan?
Thank you. Well, um, of course, we know very well, we have our City Government, but the smallest local government unit is the barangay. Maybe in terms of, uh, permits probably, or resolution of petty crimes within the facility? So, uh, did you go before the barangay of, uh, governments covering that area?
Well, it is really funny, uh, sir, because, um, if you will go over the Articles of Incorporation of the, uh, Camp Janhe Management Corporation, they have no police power. And, uh, I think this matter has been, uh, challenged already by the City Government, because they have assumed the usurp, should I say, the authority of the City Government in issuing building permits, business permits, and so on and so forth. Now, um, but if you go over there, um, as I said, Articles of Incorporation, they're only there to manage. But as far as the, um, power, the police power to issue the permits, I think that should belong entirely to the City Government. Besides, that is so incorporated in the nineteen conditionalities, which, uh, according to Mayor Dumogan, was respected unanimously by the BCDI Board during the term of Mr. Lim. And so they should respect that, that the permits should come from the city. All of a sudden, um, the new management of BCDI had a different interpretation. So, as far as we are concerned, we are really having a hard time. And that led to the problem between BCDI and DEBCO, because they make it too hard. They make it too hard for us, and yet they want us to pay, but they do not help us in trying to convince investors to come in. So, really, we are having a big problem, because, uh, as, um, punong barangay Bakungan, June Bakungan said, there should be only one government they should be dealing with. If they're segregated, then they will be dealing with the City Government of Baguio, no longer, uh, BCDI.
So, anyway, uh, Attorney, that was the past. Now, uh, with this arbitration award, do you see, in the future, that, uh, you will be, or rather, the barangays would be involved in the implementation?
Well, that is so provided for, Your Honor, in the nineteen conditionalities which they respected. But the problem is there was an addendum, so long as it is not contrary to the provisions of PD7, uh, RA7227. See, so, uh, but the earlier members of the Board of, uh, Trustees of the BCDI recognized and, um, committed themselves to respect the nineteen conditionalities. So, I would, uh, prefer really, that, uh, anyway, they are not making use of, uh, these areas anymore for any other purpose. And besides, it has already been tenanted by our residents in the barangay. That led to the, uh, coming, the, the way passing of the nineteen conditionalities after a series of People's Congress. After a series of People's Congress in the City of Baguio. So, they agreed that part of the conditions to be imposed by the local government pursuant to law is how the, the visitation manager, and one of which is the segregation of the barangays.
Yes, because, um, say, one of the effects probably, I'm not a lawyer, but one of the effects of the, uh, the possible effects of the implementation of this arbitration award would be cases on ejectment probably. Uh, now, if, in case we have this kind of cases, uh, do you think that, uh, it will have, or rather, the local government units, the barangays, will be involved in as far as this might be within the jurisdiction also?
Well, if we go into the katarungan pam barangay, Your Honor, the fact that, uh, it is a juridical entity, it will not be within the scope or jurisdiction of the barangays to, um, try and settle with, Your Honor. Uh, because that is one of the exceptions. Well, the, well, I think that, um, the only entity who's supposed to answer that would be the Basis Conversion Development Authority, the BCDI. Because as far as the Camp Janhe Development Corporation, Your Honor, we are the developers of the area. And, uh, as far as the political jurisdiction is concerned, the legislative intents of the nineteen conditionalities, I think it, that would be within the ambit of the City Government and the Basis Conversion Development Authority, who owns the lot that Camp Janhe Development Corporation is leasing at the moment.
To cut it short, uh, Attorney, will it help both the City, the City Government, the BCDI, DEBCO, and the community as a whole, if, uh, the political boundaries of these barangays would be established and, uh, well-defined?
Definitely, sir. Because, uh, we are the host, the City of Baguio is the host to BCDI, who owns the Camp Janhe Reservation Area. Now, the fact that, uh, our constituents have already elected the respective, uh, about the respective residences within the, uh, areas covered by BCDI, um, in line with the social justice clause of the Constitution, why make it hard for the people? That was the very reason why the, um, uh, former Presidential Decree 772 was decriminalized, in order to situate that the people who have blessed in life should be supported. That's why, that led to the repeal of the said decree that makes it a criminal offense to squat, you know?
Thank you, Attorney. Uh, of course, you were all invited in aid of legislation. That's why, from this discussion, uh, I have one proposed, uh, I have a proposal, I am thinking of a proposal. Anyway, uh, uh, maybe I would like to call on the punong barangays of, uh, yung nandito lang, especially from Country Club and Greenwater. Uh, Kapitana, Panapo Kapitan. I remember that there is a dispute between Greenwater and, I'm just taking this case as an illustration.
May we invite the punong barangay of Country Club Village to also occupy the front chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, to our punong barangays, I remember you had a dispute as to your, uh, bound, your territories. Now, uh, have you, were you able to settle it between Country Club and, uh, Greenwater?
Hindi pa, Consular.
Hindi pa po. What happened?
Dahil, ang alam me, yun yung boundary, yung kadastral survey na, ano, uh, yun yung boundary namin sa Greenwater. When it sinabi mo noon, Consular, na, mer, uh, adati portion may nga i-jay kaslanga, the jay, kadastral survey to Greenwater, kaslanga nakakuha iya Country Club.
So, at the conflict you- So, ada konflik yu, iti with Country Club?
Awan pa iya, Consular.
Awan ti konflik yun, napasan?
Awanan, Consular, ti kuha iya.
Also naestablish yun. Now, all we need to do is to formalize it, Garod. Okay, I'm happy to hear that.
Thank you very much, Consular.
Da kay may, Apo Kapitan, iconfirm yu ba ding, awanan di problem may yu between your two barangays?
Awan, 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 Consular. Ti, awan, awan, Consular, ti program, ba ti problemi, mi ti Greenwater and the Country Club.
How about Country Club and Happy Haloo?
Ah, awan matan.
Napasan di boundary yun?
Oo, awan ti.
So, amoyot i sak, sakupin yu di unag ti Janhe?
Wala, ah, wala, amoy.
Amoyot ti boundary iya i. Sinongay ti makin sakup ya yun ti example di Batirul?
Ay, iya kuha.
Batirul?
Ah, di lang ti, amuklangit, takot iya kuha, yung boundary namin sa kuhan, sa Happy Haloo, at saka boundary namin sa Greenwater. Yun lang ang alam ko.
Attorney Ubara, are you aware of what barangay has jurisdiction over the developed area?
I am not aware of the jurisdiction. What I am aware of is the, that it is included in the nineteen conditionalities, that it should be segregated. And I noticed to, na in this conditionality, wala naman hong itong nilalagay na panahon kung kailan dapat simulan, o kung kailan dapat tapusin, ano. Pero, sumaliwanag ko dito sa nineteen conditionalities, na maari na sana itong ipatupad, nung sinimulan pa yung lease agreement way back in October nineteen ninety-six. Pero sa kasamaang palad nga ako, labing siyam na bu, ah, taon na hong lumilipas, hanggang ngayon, eh, ganito pa rin, pinag-uusapan. Kung kaya't akong tatanungin yu, ano bang posisyon ng si JH Devco dito? Eh, dapat hong matagal na hong ipinatupad hong ito, dahil wala naman hong ah, epekto ito doon sa lease contract between the two parties, hu eh. Ah, dahil nga, hindi naman masa, maano it, maapektuhan yung, yung mga terms and conditions nung lease con, nung lease contract namin. Kung kaya't dapat talaga, ah, kaisa hong kami na maipatupad na hong kaagad ito.
Okay.
Ah, itong pagsesegregate ng mga barangay.
Salamat po, salamat po.
Yung concern ko lang, bakit pumunta ako dito sa Council?
Mr. Chairman.
Your Honor. Yes, he started already. Let's hear him.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Siya pa, siya pa.
About school, okay. Yung iskulaan namin, alam man ni, Apo Chairman, Piansa, yung problema mi doon sa school, dakel ti problema mi di iskulaan. K, sapay kami, sapay ka dito, tulungan na kami. Ta, kitanyo, is, west, north, south, ten ti iskulaan, santilat. The only school in the city of Baguio, manag madiri ay iskulaan mi. Now, iti mighty Janhe, JH, ah, BCDA, JSMC, kunaday may la di barangay. Gusto mo bang iskulaan? Yun ang tanong ng BCDA at saka JSMC. Simpre, of course. Ang answer ko doon, oo. Gusto mo ba ang segregation? Of course. Oo, ang sagot ko. Now, there is a conflict na naman. Yung iskulaan gusto ng BCDA doon sa basketball court, existing basketball court. Sabi ko sa kanila, di ba pwede sa abadrog? Hindi pwede. Asa kung gusto yung may iskulaan, dito na ipatayo, ipatayo yung four stories. Pat nga graduate ipatayo dahil nga to na multipurpose hall. Now, nagraramd kami iti resolution, nga ijay barangay, ijay existing barangay court, isu ti pangkabilan mi iti school. Iti twenty, ah, iti twenty-ten, nagraramd kami, nagraramd kami man ti resolution, ijay matlang existing basketball court. Iti twenty-twelve, isu matlang. Iti twenty-fourteen, na isu matlang, may masah, twenty-fifteen, yun. Now, there is a petition, one man petition, isu di iya, tinanong ko ka na kami. Mga makitaan yu, ti kitaan, ta'y kumadito, pakpakaasi ka na kay amin, nga city officials, ito isu dati Baguio, ta da kayo mati boses mi, da kayo mati ti bus mi. Ma, itulok yu kadimo tinahad iya ibag-baga ti BCDA, nga pangipata, dlan ti iskulaan talaga, mati ipatpatangka dahanah, madiga talaga iya i. Please lang, tulungan na kami. From nineteen ninety-seven up to the present, I was a barangay captain before. Umunta kami sa sinet mismo, ano bang nangyari? Ang topic noon is school at saka segregation. Walang nangyari, hanggang ngayon. Now, ta ti mutan, titipakpakaasi ka na kayo, ah, pumi, Consular, Con, Consular, na ipalubos yu kumamotin iya i, tapta-tak, daraman iti deep ed Baguio, deep ed Manila, ti punduna dada, ten to eleven million. Ti, baga ra punduna, isu, isu daming tagas tuhita. K, dya, dubledubled, na ipakpakaasi, nga tulungan na kami kuman, tapno ti casta, katdamit kumati iskulaan na iya i. Lo ulit, sap, santilat ang iskulaan namin doon, is, west, north, south. Anyangay, the only, the only school in the city of Baguio. Kawawa kami iya i, Attorney Mandapat, alam mo naman doon, pumupunta ka doon. So, pangpakaasi yun tawang kumamotin, iti mangkonkontra, ta, akpakpakaasi ta tinumot, biyang i, iprinchara iti Country Club Village. Pati digiti tatao, iya i, anin, ti kaya don, tamadin sarot iya i, for how many years? Okay, ilaban, ah, ilaban natin, siguro adoba, manalo tayo, hindi. Yun ang question, kung manalo tayo, ilan taon? Yun lang, pero adamat na kita'y kumunkun, teraminga duma, nga Consular. K, sapay kumata, ma kibag may masah, adamat na ti Country Club Village. Kitanyo ka di, ipapilit tay iya i, engineering intervention kungkula tayo. Anyangay, mapanay, worth twenty million, hanantapay nga mga kuda iya, na yaw awanin iya iskulaan, Apo, Con, Consular. So nga pangpakaasi yu, this is to appeal, nga ipalubos tay ka din, ah, pangpakaasi yu. Sa pangpakaasi, datalang ti, basit lang ti, Consular, iskulaan. Pangpakaasi tay lang unay, tanyo kumakonkontranan. Good afternoon.
We will suggest that the punong barangay write a letter formally to the Council regarding that matter. Tapno, may tadam ti Council ti opportunity, nga mga address data separately from what the executive is doing. Okay? Tagi minket, adesuratan. So, I think with what you have told us, I think the members are already educated on what to do with the letter. Yeah? Amoyin, teramidinmin, at least amudan ti background iya, iya iskulaan nga, kaya't mo itakder iya Country Club Village. And siguro ano deliberation mi rato yun, that will be the time mamunda, no nyari iya sitwasyon, and probably, no nyati mobalin ng intervention na rata. Anyway, naibagadan.
Okay, Garod. Thank you very much. K, sapay ka dito. Ah, hantay na yaw awan da to, ta kitanyo, taktu diya kuhan, di bubungan na, tutudan. Di dadumadisi min to, dali basketball court, Apo Chairman, ma kita majeng ri, daduma ngasimintu, kaktingtindag, madanagan, dama estrayen. Datu iti keda, asap kumada to, ya po.
We will take note of that. For the last round, we recognize the Honorable Yiranon. I mean, first round.
I'm going to give the closing remarks about this Janhe. I am happy and sad at the same time that we are talking about the privatization of Janhe. At first, when it was brought out, Consular Yandro Yangot said he was apprehensive about the segregation of the thirteen barangays. But me, I was negative from the start. Why? I did not like Janhe to be changed. I do not like the face of Janhe to be changed. Janhe was the pearl, the jewel of Baguio, and I didn't want anything changed in Janhe before. And then, there were many things that happened. First, they started bulldozing Janhe. Where there were no hills, they put a hill. Where there were hills, they put a flat area. So, there was havoc in Janhe then. And the result of that, many barangays who had springs told me that they have lost their springs. In Hillside and in, in other barangays, they said, "Ma'am, wala na yung pinaglalabahan namin, wala na yung pinagkukuhanan namin ng sweet water na iniinom namin." Mula nung nagexcavate ang Devco, sabi nila, na wala yung spring namin. So now, that is one of your problems, that is one of the effect of your bulldozing Kamjanay. Second, yung mga trabahadores doon, all of them, they were, they, ah, business stopped in Kamjanay because of the development. They said, "Ma'am, paano na ba yun? Wala kaming pagkain ng mga anak namin." And so we told Janhe to give them some jobs inside Janhe, because they said, "We will not remove the employees of Kamjanay, we will give them work." So what work did they give? They put a small restaurant near the chapel in Janhe before. A restaurant while they were bulldozing. And then they said to me, "Paano namang kami kumikita, ma'am? Wala namang pumapasok sa Janhe, because nabukwalan ti Janhe. Kami-kami lang ang nagbibili in our restaurant. How is that?" And Mondays, ilang pamilya ang mag-manage sa restaurant. Tuesdays, ibang tao na naman. And so, I went there and see. They have a manager before, manager for their construction, a Vietnamese, a Mr. Nguyen something. Oh, Fran Nguyen. And when he saw that I was always going to the restaurant and, and for the, for the people there to tell me their problems, he forbid me not to, forbid the Kamjanay people not to talk with me. So one day, I went to the restaurant. When they saw me, they all went inside. Sabi ko, "Bakit? Ano pa, ano bang kasalanan ko dito? Bakit iniignore ako?" And then, and then they told me later on, they came to my office, "Ma'am, sorry that we are not allowed to talk to you by the Vietnamese. Don't talk with that Yiranon," sabi daw niya. "Don't let her come in," sabi niya. "Okay, I will do not go there," sabi ko. Then, wala ng restaurant, wala ng restaurant. Then, paano namang kami, ma'am? Anong kuhan namin? And then they started selling, selling whatever they sold in Janhe. Mga, yun mga business nila ngayon, they become realtors in Janhe. But, kokote lang naman ang nabebenta, nakabenta ng Janhe. Later, I went to the, because that Vietnamese, takot na takot ang mga tiga, yung mga employees doon, takot na takot sila sa Vietnamese. So I went to the Department of Labor and asked them, "Do you know that there is a Vietnamese in Kamjanay? Does he have a permit to work in the Philippines?" Nagresearch sila. "No, ma'am, they have not. Now I'm telling you that there is a Vietnamese there in Kamjanay who is lording over the Filipinos." "We will see to it, ma'am." Then, pinalis nila, yung Vietnamese na yun. Later, I saw the, the Director of, of the Bureau of Labor. I met her one day in, in the Convention Center and said, "Ma'am, wala na yung Vietnamese, wala siyang permit." "Oh, good," I said. Again, will you continue? Because they, they have no respect. And then, I went, I with some people, I went to see what is going on inside of Janhe. I'm telling you this, because that is the kind of development, developer Jan, this Devco is. And I'm telling you now, I want to express my feelings now. I have long suppressed these feelings. Where was I? And so, don't, don't disrupt me when I'm talking or else. And so, this, this respect for us went on. I brought some people to the gate of Janhe to tell them, "Can we enter and look at what development they are doing with Janhe?" And then the guard said, "No, ma'am, you cannot enter." "Why? You better get a permit from the office." But it was all mud already, all the roads were mud. And I said, I told one of my companions to go and get a permit for us to enter. And you know what that permit said? "You may enter, but, oh, we are not, we do not guarantee your safety inside." So if they throw three stones at me, I would have died and, and nobody would, would answer for that. I'm just telling you this, yung ginagawa ng Devco sa amin dito sa Baguio. And then, the, the, the laborers there and telling me all their problems. But we cannot do anything, because I cannot even go inside Janhe to tell them. Then one time, all the Consulars were allowed to go inside, including Consular Karinyo, who had a new shoes, new shoes. And it became all mud up to his ankles. I don't know how you got out of it. Maybe you walked barefoot. But when we saw the conditions there in Janhe, you cannot recognize Janhe anymore. You cannot recognize where the halfway house is, where the mile high is. Everything is leveled and some parts are made into a hill. Janhe was ravaged. It broke my heart to see Janhe, no more Janhe. And now, I said, "Why are you against Janghe?", they told me. "Because Janghe is going to be ravaged", I said. "Will you be here?", I told my companions, "Will you be here in 10 to 15 years? When something happens in Janghe, when a problem happens in Janghe, will you be alive to defend your vote?", I told them. But they're still alive. And they're still alive. So, I'm just telling you this because we, tiga Cam Jang... Tiga Baguio suffered in the development... In the course of the development of Cam Janghe. They were overbearing. They did not respect the tiga Baguio. So I hated them. And now, that is the effect... That is the effect now of Baguio, of Cam Janghe. Look, the activity is only where the restaurants are. If you go there and exit through country clubs, my description is, it's like a memorial park. You don't see anybody there. It's like a memorial, as silent as memorial park. So, Janghe, the happy Janghe, is not there anymore. And we cannot bring it back. We cannot bring it. No matter how many billions you are talking about, here now, we cannot bring back the Janghe that we love. And so, as Devco lives, when you live, you can bring that sentiments with you that we, from the people of Baguio, are sad about our losing our Cam Janghe, the jewel of Baguio. Thank you.
Well, that's the first round. Shall we agree that we will have only 1 point each? 1 point each only? 1 point each? We'll observe the same sequence. But before that, I think we'd like to give Tony Mandapat a chance to react.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to inform the Honorable Consular Lilia Yanon, ma'am. Well, we do hope that you would not hate Cam Janghe Development Corporation that much because Cam Janghe Development Corporation merely complied with the master development plan prepared by the Basis Conversion Development Authority. So, all of the renovations, the other improvements, the leveling inside Cam Janghe were in accord with the master development plan, not prepared by the Cam Janghe Development Corporation or the Devco, but by the BCDA. Yes, Your Honor, that was the scenario. And besides, well, all of the resorts that have been taken over by the BCDA are now down to the drain. Not even in Mimosa, ma'am. It's being offered for lease, but nobody would like to take over after BCDA took over. They don't have the funds. The government, with all due respect, don't have the funds to maintain a resort of that kind. Just if we, for example, only the golf course at Cam Janghe, ma'am, it needs 1.2 billion, million pesos a month to maintain. I doubt if the government has the money to put up with for the maintenance of these developed areas in Cam Janghe. So, anyway, with that said, ma'am, Devco was able to contribute 245 million pesos to the city of Baguio. It is... Well, it was course through the BCDA. BCDA was mandated to give you 25% from the rentals of Devco. So if you come to think about it, where did BCDA get the 25% from Devco?
Along that line, Attorney Mandapat, there was a point in time when the city of Baguio was trying to collect the 25% share. And the reason advanced by BCDA is that there was a delay in the payment being made by Devco so they cannot tender payment of the share of the city of Baguio.
Yes, sir. As narrated earlier by Attorney Obara when asked, there had been so many restructuring, restructuring agreements because, well, that... In the decision, it was all tackled there. Who was at fault?
Yes, yes, yes.
So, there was a delay because the decision itself, Your Honor, it's very clear. Maybe there will be a time when we will...
There is an item...
In page 257, it says there. Page 257 of this decision.
There is an item that's subject of the decision, but it was submitted as an issue in the arbitration. This has reference to the casino floor of the hotel suites. Does that mean that if development continued, we will be having a casino in Janghe?
There was no... I am not aware, Your Honor, because I became one of the legal counsels of Cam Janghe Development Corporation only in the year 2012, Your Honor.
Now, what I mean is, in the discussion of one of the issues or the items for arbitration is the item on the casino floor of the hotel suites. It was not taken up in the... In the decision arbitration tribunal, but it does mention of a casino floor. Can we be enlightened about that casino floor?
We are not aware of any issue on the casino floor as one of the issues raised before the Philippine Dispute Resolution Center, Your Honor.
Well, we... I found it in the decision or rather in the arbitral award. There was no ruling or any statement on that, but there was that mention of a casino floor of the hotel suites.
Well, that was not one of the issues that was raised, Your Honor, before the Philippine Dispute Resolution Center.
The second round, we follow the same order without the Honorable Tamanda. May we start with Honorable Karinyo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is directed at Attorney Mandapat in relation to the questions posed by the Honorable Datwin. Attorney Mandapat, you mentioned about kaliwaan in the enforcement of the REIT. Well, on paper, that is ideal. It's very good. But in practicality, the manner of paying 1.4 billion in a manager's check can only take seconds. How about vacating the place? Can it take you seconds also? Maybe 30 seconds to leave? So that you can say, "Oh, there is kaliwaan"?
Well, would you like to be there to watch us? How fast we are going to vacate Cam Janghe? Once we are paid, right? So that you will see for yourself?
I'm just talking about the practicality. I do not think you can do that in 30 seconds in the same way as fast as I can hand you the 1.42 billion cashier's check if that will be the form of payment that BCDA will pay Devco. So, what I'm saying is, the practicality of a kaliwaan, is it not more prudent that we left the court since there is already... According to the court, there is already an amount deposited in the name of the court that the court can give you once you vacate the properties?
Well, Your Honor, the deposit, Your Honor, is one of the questions being raised because that is subject to Kowa approval, no less than the BCDA said. They have the money deposited there at the land bank, but it is subject to the approval of Kowa, whether or not Kowa will approve the release of the money.
But the check is already in the name of the court?
Well, that we do not know because it is not even an official document submitted to the court. It was only received by Sheriff Galano.
Okay. Anyway, one thing is clear. Devco does not trust BCDA in the same way that BCDA does not trust Devco in the enforcement of the REIT. Now, my follow-up question. Your incorporation, Cam Janghe Development Corporation is incorporated with an authorized capital stock of 1 million pesos. At the end of... With all these failures, at the end of the day, after the decision is granted, you are now given 1.41 billion pesos. Is that an earning for the Cam Janghe Development Corporation?
That was the rental, Your Honor. It's clear, that is not the earning. That was the rental paid by the Devco. Now, Your Honor, that is the amount that was... We will not even say that it is the income generated by Devco, but that was the rental pursuant to the contract. Please, Your Honor, paid by Devco which, after decision. And you would like to take, you know, offense to the statement earlier by the Honorable Consular Datwin that we were evicted. We were not evicted. The decision took place and so it was not a case of ejection. We were never evicted, Your Honor, because that was the prayer of both parties.
The principal worry of the locators there is once you receive the amount, eh, mag-aaway-away na 'yung BCDA and locators. Ganun ba 'yung mangyayari? Iwanan niyo na sila? Mag-aaway-away na? Kasi nasan 'yung pera? Asan 'yung pera na binayad ng locators?
Nandun po, sa bahay nila.
Bahay po niyo?
Niyo mga locators po.
Binayad po sa inyo eh.
Hindi nga. Ganito nga po yun eh. Kaya nga po, di ba? Halimbawa, kayo po ang may-ari ng kayo 'yung BCDA. Pinaupapunin niyo sa amin, Devco. Paano kami magbabayad sa inyo? Papaupa namin 'yung mga kuwan dun. Papatayo kami ng instructions, ibebenta sa kanila. At 'yung benta doon, yun ang pinambayad namin sa inyo. Sampu kami kukuha ng pambayad kundi dun sa mga improvements. See? So, ngayon, binenta halimbawa nung isang unit kay Consular Bagbagan. Kay Consular Bagbagan na 'yung unit na yun. Pero 'yung pera, binayad din namin sa inyo. Eh, por sinupit, goes to us also as income. Normal lang namang po sa business yan eh.
Okay, okay nga po yun eh. Ngayon, isosoli ko sa inyo 'yung pera. Ahalis na kayo at papabayaan niyo na kami mag-aaway ni Consular Bagbagan.
Hindi. Kaya nga po, pinaglalaban namin sa Court of Appeals eh. Yun ang issues na ni-race namin sa Court of Appeals. Number one is 'yung rights ng mga locators. Kasi ang stand po namin, no? Ang stand namin, ito subjudicinal eh. Pero ang stand namin is, you should respect the right of the locators. Pero sabi nila, hindi. You cannot raise higher than the water. Eh, the source... The river cannot raise flow higher than the source. Yun ang kanilang argumento. Pero sa amin naman, hindi. They have a vested right. So, considering that the lower court is not in a position to interpret, we went to the Court of Appeals.
Doon po sa example niyo, hindi po ba si Consular Bagbagan ay sublessy lamang? Base doon sa civil law natin. Sapagkat kayo ang lessy, halimbawa si Consular Lawana ang lesser, kayo ang lessy, pina-subless niyo kay Mr. Bagbagan, eh, siya po ay sublessy, hindi po ba? Doon po sa example na binigay niyo.
If I may be allowed to...
O, sige po, sige po.
To give some light to it.
Maclaruhan po natin.
Hindi po accurate na description na sublessy po 'yung pinagbentahan namin ng properties. Kasi ganito po yan.
Ano po ang term doon? Kasi sa contract ninyo with the BCDA, kayo po ay lessy.
Yes. Idiscuss ko po yan. Ito, papaliwanag ko ng napakaliwanag ko. Ga-ganito po ang nangyari po. Diba, nung nirentahan po namin 'yung property na yan, wala pa hong development? Wala 'yung mga manor, wala 'yung forest lodge. Ang nagpunta po niyan, 'yung CJH Devco po. Okay. Maliwanag na nung nag-enter kami ng lease contract, ang nili-lease namin 'yung lupa. Hindi namin pwedeng i-lease 'yung development kasi wala pe. Sa amin ang galing yun eh. Okay. Ngayon, binili ngayon ng third party 'yung property na... Kung sabi natin, 'yung isang unit sa manor, binili niya.
Halimbawa po cottage na lang. Kasi 'yung unit, eh, walang lupa yun eh. 'Yung cottage na lang na may lupa.
Oo, sige ho. Di, kung wala pa, binili lamang po lupa. 'Yung unho, ah, sinablis niya yun, 'yung lupa. Pero pa nagpatayo na siya ng cottage doon, ay hindi na sublessyon. Siya na kasi ang may-ari, noong ipinatayo niyang improvement.
Pero papan... Tawag sa kanya ngayon doon. 'Yung basis po ng pinagpatayuan niya, eh, sabi niyo, subless.
'Yung lupa, yun nga ho.
Kaya po. And who ba, kung sino po 'yung may... At the end of the contract, kung sino po 'yung may-ari ng lupa, ay siya rin may-ari ng improvement, hindi ba?
Okay. Kung natapos po 'yung lease contract, pero hindi nga po natapos eh. Kaya nga, kenlaro ng Arbitration Tribunal. Sinabi nila ng maliwanag, "Ikaw, BCDA, dapat ka magbayad ng interes kay CJH Devco over and on top of the 1.421 billion na pinababalik namin sa inyo."
Mukhang wala po yun sa award.
Di, tingnan lang, pagtanong nalang ho.
Meron pa akong copya rito nung dispositive portion ng award.
And nasa body po, wala po sa...
Eh, hindi po ba ang controlling dito 'yung dispositive portion?
The entire decision po is controlling ho. The entire decision po. You cannot interpret a decision based on... Oo, based on portions lang of the decision. You have to interpret it together. Pero maliwanag ko doon na ang sabi ho ng Arbitration Tribunal, ay ito po. Ikaw, BCDA, dapat ka magbayad sa CJH Devco ng interes doon sa 1.421 billion. Pero hindi ka na namin inre要在 na maglabas pa ng additional na cash. Yun na lamang tinanggap na bayad ng CJH Devco mula nung sa mga third parties na pinagbentahan niya. 'Yung tatayo na interest payment ng BCDA. Meron pong ganong finding so 'yung Arbitration Tribunal. Kaya 'yan nga ho 'yung sinasabi namin na hindi ho tama na ikaracterize 'yung relationship ng CJH Devco at nung third parties na purely sublessy lang ho sila. Adisyonho ang argumento ho namin. Ngayon, kung 'yan po ay paniniwalaan o mas bibigyan timbang ng korte, eh, malalaman ho natin sa susunod na kabanata. Dahil, anyway, nakaano na ho sa Court of Appeals, then antay na lamang ho natin 'yung decision po ng Court of Appeals.
Salamat po.
Honorable Lawana? Then, Honorable Aluan?
Maybe, Mr. Chairman, I believe that we discussed the issue very thoroughly, so can we go back to session?
Well, we have agreed to give each one one last round. Unless we have no further questions, then... Yes. So, let's have the Honorable Datwin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I take this opportunity? Just one question because this I heard very clearly from Mr. Casanova when he came here to say his piece. He said that Cam Janghe Devco earned 6 billion from the time they took over the place. But to this date, they refuse to submit financial records, financial statements so that this can be subjected to examination so that we will know how much really should the Baguio have earned if they paid their rental to the government and the 25% was also supposed to be received by Baguio. May I know if this is correct? That you earned 6 billion, but you refused to submit your financial statement? And because of your failure to pay your rental, Baguio suffered a lot because of your failure to pay rental? May I ask your take on this, Attorney?
Marami mo salamat kasi ano, importanting punto ho yun na sinabi niya nung nakaraang hearing at ang sagot po namin doon ay wala po 'yung basihan at hindi po yun tutuwa. Tinagalu ko na po ha, hindi po yun tutuwa. At tatanungin niyo ko, eh, anong prueba mo na hindi yun tutuwa? Okay. Putahan muna natin 'yung hindi ipinakita ng kumpanya, ng CJH Devco, ang kanilang books of accounts para hindi madiskubre 'yung 6 billion na kinita supposedly. Okay. Noon ho arbitration tribunal hearing, humingi po ang BCDA ng... Mula sa Arbitration Tribunal na i-examine lahat ng books of accounts, ledgers, and other financial records ng kumpanya. At ito po ay pinagbigyan ng Arbitration Tribunal. At ito po ay pinagbigyan ng Arbitration Tribunal. In fact, for the next three weeks, so, tatlong linggo po, yun ho accounting records, books of accounts, ledgers, at other financial books ng kumpanya ay ipinresenta po sa mga representatives ng BCDA. Tatlong linggo po nilang ine-examine po yan. Bakit ko po alam? Kasi nandun po ako. Ako po ang nagrepresent sa CJH DeBco at ako mismo ang naglabas. Nung mga balikbayan boxes na humigit, kumula mo siguro, may mga 40. 40 na, na ano ha, na balikbayan boxes so. From 1996, simula nung, nagsimula 'yung lease contract, hanggang 2012, inilabas po yan lahat. At inexamine po nila ang lahat ng mga documents na yan. Okay. Ngayon, sigurado sa sabihin, eh, Attorney, papaano ba? Eh, may sinasabi na hindi naman audited 'yung financial statement ninyo? At 'yan ay madalas na sabihin ni Mr. Arnold Casanova. Okay. Unang clarification. Hindi ho sa lahat ng taon, hindi po audited statement na sinadmit po namin. Okay. Hanggang 2002 po, audited financial statements po, meron po kami. Naisubmit po yan sa SEC. Ngayon, 'yung susunod na mga taon, hindi na po audited financial statement. Bakit? Kasi ito po nagiging, nagiging issue ho nung mga accountants. Paano ho tatratuhin 'yung back rentals na kineclaim ng BCDA? From an accounting point of view, yun ngayon 'yung naging rason, nagiging palaisipan. Papaano iibook yun? Yun ba ay expense o ito ba ay income? Kasi hindi pa namang binabayaran dahil nga merong, pag itong dispute between the parties, mas lalong na highlight 'yung question na yun nung nagkaroon ng arbitration. Kasi nung nagkaroon ng arbitration, hindi, wala pang desisyon ang korte, ang Arbitration Tribunal, kung paano tartaruhin niyang back rental sa sinasabi na hindi binayaran ng BCDA. Dahil ang posisyon ng CJH DeBco, hindi dapat siyan bayaran kasi hindi tumupad ang BCDA sa kanilang obligasyon. Ah, sabi naman ang BCDA, hindi. Dapat bayaran mo na yan sa amin at dapat ibook mo na yan dahil hindi mo binabayaran sa amin yan. Parabili, dapat ibook mo yan na parang income? Oo, parang income. Income, income ng BCDA. So yun yun. Hindi dahil sa may itinatago ang kumpanya. Yun ho 'yung ano. So maliwanag ho, na-examine na po ng BCDA ang records, ang financial records, books of accounts, at ledgers ng CJH DeBco. Okay. At pati yun ay finoto copy pa nila. 'Yung mga gusto nilang i photocopy, pinayagan pong, at inutusan po ng Arbitration Tribunal ang CJH DeBco na payagan ipa photocopy ha, yang ano man doon sa mga records na yun ang gusto nilang i photocopy para isubmit na evidencia sa Arbitration Tribunal. Kaya paulit-ulit ito, maririnig niyo, napag-usapan na po yan sa Arbitration Tribunal. Kasi 'yan nga ho 'yung isang usapin na central doon sa Arbitration Tribunal.
Related question. Anyway, ang tinatanong pa rin ng mga taga-Baguio Attorney, ano? Billion lang kinikita niyo. Bakit hindi po kayo magbayad ng opa ninyo para maka-kumita naman ng siudad ng Baguio? Kawawag Baguio dito, di ba? Alam mo naman, dahil sa hindi niyo pagbayad ng rental, Kawawang Baguio. Bakit? Yun din ang pinakatanong sa lahat talagang, 'yung rental, bakit ayaw niyo magbayad kung dito ka sa Baguio? 'Yung ibang nagpapaupa, 10,000 lang 'yung hindi niya babayaran. Isang buwan lang siya na hindi makapagbayad. Eject ka agad siya, dudalin sa korte. Pero kayo billion-billion. Of course, I'm just asking 'yung mga common questions. Ano kami ay elected ng taong bayan, kami kaya po kami nagtatanong. So dapat po, masagot po natin yan.
Maganda nga ho eh. Na-appreciate namin 'yung mga ganyang hard questions. At saka 'yung galing mula sa puso para ma, kung ano man 'yung mga hindi ninyo naintindihan, eh, may paliwanag naman namin. Kasi 'yung pagpapaliwanag, 'yan obligasyon namin yan. Okay. Bakit hindi magbabayad ang CJH DeBco nung sinasabing 3.3 billion pesos na back rental na kineclaim ng BCDA? Kasi po, 'yan po ay kautusan ng Arbitration Tribunal. Ganun lang ho kasi simple po 'yan. Nakakalungkot na may epekto po 'yan sa city government. Kasi ang magiging implikasyon nun, hindi niyo na makukolektahin 'yung 25%. Kung tatanungin niyo ako, 'yung ba implikasyon? Opo. Kasi nga, hindi na kam, inutos ng, inutos ho ah, ng Arbitration Tribunal na hindi na po pwedeng kolektahin ng BCDA 'yung 3.3 billion na back rentals. Bakit? Kasi maliwanag ho, ang rason, hindi po tumupad ang BCDA sa kanilang obligasyon sa pagtatayo ng One Stop Action Center. Ganun lang po yun.
I think the Honorable Lawana has a follow-up?
Yes, just a personal concern that, of course, may menahalogo. I will take advantage of the presence of, of course, our two attorney, attorneys who are here. This is regarding the golf share. Attorney Mandapat is very aware that last year I bought a golf share from Camp Gianni Golf Management Club, or Club. Well, can you update me personally? What will happen in case that you will be leaving out Camp Gianni? I want to hear first an information, what will happen to my golf share? And of course, this is true to all the members of the Baguio Gianni Golf Club. In a brief...
Presently ho, nag-file ho ng petition ang Camp Gianni Golf Club. Nag-file na po sila ng kanilang kasuho at ang kanilang hiningi ho mula sa Court of Appeals ay respetuhin 'yung kanilang karapatan. So isa, isa, 'yan ho 'yung isang issue na ire-resolve po ng Court of Appeals patungkol dyan sa bagay na 'yan. So kahit na umalis na po ang CJH DeBco, sabihin na ho natin, umalis na po ang CJH DeBco, 'yung kasu na yun na i-final ng Golf Club po, mananatili ho yan. Hangga't hindi ho dinidisisyonan ng Court of Appeals, yang bagay na 'yan na dapat ba na respetuhin 'yung kontrata, 'yung pagbebenta ng golf shares sa mga third parties na kagaya ninyo, eh, mananatili ho kayo doon?
So big sabihin, hintay na lang natin 'yung decision ng Court of Appeals.
Yes, sir.
And while waiting, at least 'yung, kahit nawalan na kayo doon, we enjoy the same rights.
Opo. Hangga't hindi ho dinidisisyonan ng Court of Appeals po 'yung bagay na yun, eh, hindi ho masasabi ng kahit sino man na akin 'yan. Dahil yun nga ho eh, 'yung usapin na 'yan, nandun ho sa Court of Appeals.
Okay, thank you very much.
One question from the Chair. When was the last payment of rent per your record? Because this is important in the computation of the 25% share of the city of Baguio.
Ah, in connection with that one?
Yes, yes.
Oho. Eh, sa akin oh, kaya nga ho ito 'yung, as a resource person, pinapaalam ko po sa inyo. Remember ho na ang ibinayad na po na renta, kabuwang renta ng CJH DeBco to BCDA is 1.421 billion pesos. Ngayon, kung kukuhanin niyo po ang 25% po niyan, eh, yun ho ay pumapatak na about 355 million pesos. Now, kususundan ho natin 'yung report na ibinigay sa atin ng presidente ng BCDA na kung sana sinabi niya, nakapagbayad na sila ng 245 million pesos, eh, ang lumalabas ho ngayon, merong pang 110 million pesos na kailangan na hindi pa ho na account. Eh, yun ho ay iniiwan po namin sa tanggapan na ito, kung ano pong action ang gagawin niyo po tungkol doon.
That is why we are asking if your records can reflect the last date of payment? Because baka naman 'yung payment na mga 'yan is credited na nung nagkakaso na.
Ah, well, nasa sa inyo na po 'yan. Eh, kung, kung, consider niyo po na credited. Pero ang sa akin oh, meron ho kasing difference na 110 million na kailangan pa ho, papalang, kailangan ho imbestigahan ng City Council kung ano pong nangyari doon.
Because the record of the accountant will show receipt of about 248 million. 248 at a particular point in time when we were settling the payment of Convention Center. Kaya importante din sa amin, kung kailan 'yung last na bayad niyo. So that we will know how to compute also the 25%? Bakit ganito lang ka, ang 25% as of the last payment also to the city of Baguio?
Sige po. Naintindihan po namin 'yung inyong punto ho at ipapaalam ko ho sa kumpanya para ho makipagugnayan ho ka agad at kung ano man 'yung dokumento na kailangan nunin niyo para ho ma-establish 'yung, 'yung, kung kayo ho eh magpa-file ng any claim, eh, para ho maibigay po sa inyo.
Salamat po. Thank you. Any more? Do we have any more questions? If there are none, do we have a motion? Any second? Has been moved in seconded that we go back to session. But before that, may we thank our resource persons, Attorney Mandapat, Attorney Obara? Thank you. Thank you so much.
At maraming salamat din oh sa pagkakataon nun na ito.
Permission to leave, Your Honors. Chairman?
Any of the, yes?
May we respectfully move that we be given copies of the proceedings today so that we can appropriately make the appropriate action later? Because I don't think we are ready to make any action now.
Yes, Honorable Aluan?
While ago, we asked permission if they could give us a copy of that arbitration decision. And they said that they cannot provide us because it is confidential. However, we can ask the city secretary to prepare a letter addressed to them so that it would be a reason for them to ask for an extra copy for this August body. Which the, the adhere to. Second is, if we could have a copy of at least one contract for the locators so that we will have, it will serve as a guide for this August body in making actions or preparing legislation with respect to Gianni, Mr. Vice Mayor.
And we'll arrange with this city secretary to make the letter?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I hope you can say that, or should that be a ground for me to go up further? Well, thank you. Yes, Honorable Karinio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think as suggested, we... While it is good that we will await for the records to be transcribed, perhaps we can meet again in a special session and call, not necessarily...